Does it want to be?
Yeah.
We don't, they'll catch up.
Councilmember Mersch. Uh, councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protan Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Piper.
Here.
Uh, pledge allegiance, Jim.
Since you showed up today.
Thank you.
Ready again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're welcome. All right, uh, do we have any presentations? We do not. Um, like to the order of the agenda, I'd like to move fifteen A up right after eight.
I would move the order of the agenda with the aforementioned change.
And are we also putting up fourteen B? I think there are residents here who speak on that.
We'll go fifteen A, then we'll go fourteen B.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yes, we're good.
Perfect, moving on.
I have a mo-, I'm sorry, the motion was made by?
By, uh, by councilmember Black.
And B seconded.
Yes.
I had Leah Mersch.
Oh, Leah is seconded, it's all good. No, no one's keeping score.
Thank you.
Okay, then, uh, someone make a motion for the blue folder?
We would accept the folder second.
Call the favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we need public comment on non-agenda items.
All right, uh, we're gonna make any public comments for things that are not on the agenda. Fred?
Thank you. I stole the hand in copies to make this part of the record.
Thank you.
So, move. Second. All favor?
Aye.
All right. 13th Centering Road. December seven, nineteen forty-one is a date that all Americans will forever remember in infamy. January seven, twenty twenty-five is a date that all residents of Los Angeles County will also remember forever as a date where the consequences of the failure of our elected and appointed leaders to do everything within their power to mitigate wildfire risk and damage and improve evacuation routes became apparent. The extent of the damages caused by these wildfires may have been unexpected to some, but they should not have been. The residents of Rolling Hills have to date been spared even though all the factors for a wildfire of epic proportions were in place except one. All that was missing was ignition. I believe we are spared so that we can finally do everything within our power to mitigate wildfire risk and damage and improve evacuation. Starting in twenty thirteen, I recommend to the city and the association appropriate improvements to the Crest Road East emergency evacuation route. I will not go into the proposed improvements that is within the association's jurisdiction except to say it has been the usual Alice in Wonderland down the rabbit hole, kick the can down the road process, which I hope will mercifully come to an appropriate resolution in February. I will address the city's own version of same concerning changing the signs to more accurately reflect the use of this road. On nine eleven twenty-three, the city council assigned this issue to the traffic commission. It was first placed on the traffic commission's agenda on nine twenty-eight twenty-three and again on twelve one eleven twenty-three. At that point, I believe that it was resolved. I met with city staff on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at the signs to go over in details. It was again placed on the TC's agenda on five thirty twenty-four, but I was not notified of same. The traffic commission reversed its twelve eleven twenty-three decision because it was not fully advised of what they had ruled on back in December. It was again placed on the traffic commission's nine twenty-six twenty-four agenda where it was finally resolved. However, to date, nothing has been done to make the approved changes. At the January eighth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting, I presented a list of nine issues which I requested that city staff be given appropriate directions and placed on the agenda in the near future. I've attached those nine, that statement of January eighth. Marion and I then met with Leah and the city manager to go over same. It was made clear that there will be nothing done on item one concerning the class A roof issue at this time. I urge the city to pass an ordinance that all structures have class A roofs no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Insofar as item two, I urge the city to pass an ordinance that all the plants identified in the Los Angeles County Fire Department ready, set, go brochure be removed. Removal same could be staged, that is, within ten feet of all of the paved portions of the roads, all trees outside of said ten feet that are tall enough if they fall will in any way negatively impact the use of the roads and all said plants within fifty feet of any structures within thirty days. The remainder be removed within ninety days. An appeal procedure should be part of the ordinance wherein the property owner or the easement holder will have the opportunity to show that removal of said vegetation due to the terrain is not possible. Insofar as item three, the city should pass an ordinance that will require installation of seismic natural gas and propane shut-off values valves on all property within thirty days. Insofar as item four, the city should be given a copy of all fire department annual fire code compliance inspection reports which cite parcels for non-compliance. Insofar as item five, the issue of follow-up inspections by the fire department to confirm that those parcels that have a fuel modification plan pursuant to Los Angeles County Fire Code section forty-nine zero six et sic are staying in compliance with their plans and that the fire department personnel that are doing its annual fire code compliance inspections have a copy of these cop plans that just be clarified and rectified if necessary. Insofar as item six is now my understanding that the city is actively inspecting parcels for compliance with its municipal code section eight point three oh et sic. These inspections, however, should not be limited to what can be observed from the roads. Insofar as item seven, at the last association board meeting, a member had contacted our local fire station and they indicated to him an equipment wish list. This should be followed up to see if the Los Angeles County Fire Department Foundation can be utilized to purchase and maintain the equipment as well as any other fire abatement improvements. Insofar as item eight, the issue of creating a five oh one C three foundation was rejected. Instead, a city ordinance was approved for a gifting program. This should also be looked into insofar as funding the purchase and ongoing maintenance of the equipment wish lists set forth above. Nothing has been done insofar as creating a firewise community and/or a fire safe council for Rolling Hills. I again urge that they both pre-create it. To remind everyone, if you're in a firewise community under current insurance code requirements, you can get a ten percent reduction of your, uh, of your fire insurance, including if you're forced to be in the fare plan. Insofar as item nine concerning the status of the reduction of the fire fuel in Rolling Hills gullies, we are all aware of the sa-, of same, and I will comment on this issue later in the agenda. At the June tenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting, I presented the attached statement concerning fire pits. To date, nothing has been done. Also, at the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting, I also presented the attached statement concerning improving the wildfire, wildfire resiliency of Storm Hill Park. To date, nothing has been done. Rolling Hills Municipal Code section eight point thirty et sic is deficient in that it only addresses dead vegetation except for tumbleweeds and dead palm fruits, and it excludes areas that exceed a slope of two to one. At a minimum, the slope restriction should be eliminated forthwith. Also, it should be expanded to include all weeds, whether dead or not. Again, an appeal procedure should be part of the ordinance wherein the property owner or the easement holder will have the opportunity to show that removal of said vegetation due to the terrain is not possible. The current wildfires have brought another issue which needs to be addressed. Is Cal Water's infrastructure, including but not limited to tanks, reservoirs, fire hydrants, and backup energy sources for its pumps sufficient to fight a major wildfire in Rolling Hill, Hills? A letter should be addressed to Cal Water, a public hearing should be immediately held, and representatives of Cal Water should be required to attend to address these issues. Another issue is what access should be allowed into the city during red flag days. This issue was brought up for the association some time ago, and to its credit, they did ban the use of the trails during red flag conditions. Further restrictions should be placed on said access immediately, either the city or the association, I don't care who does it. Finally, Los Angeles County is not enforcing the state law requiring the establishment of a five-foot no-ember zone around structures. This non-enforcement is purportedly due to not receiving sufficient state guidelines, especially concerning decks. A letter should be sent to the county board of supervisors demanding that said law be enforced in Rolling Hills. Additionally, the city should pass an ordinance implementing said state law until the county starts to enforce same. There's other issues that I didn't have time to put, such as the status of the Schultz evacuation route, look, taking another look at the Portuguese Bend, uh, Road South evacuation, which I realize is problematical because of the land movement in that area. However, if P, uh, if Franchio PV gets their act together and actually puts equipment further up the hill to de-water, then they'll have to create a road to do that, and we could be able to hook in then. And also, long-term fire retardants, which I've discussed ad nauseam at several meetings, giving all the technical data and all the reasons why they should be, it should be utilized, if there are areas where you cannot get in to do wildfire abatement work because of the steep terrain. That's it.
Thank you very much. Ah, Jean?
Uh, Jean Hanbo, thirty, uh, thirty-three Portuguese Bend Road.
I would, I was gonna do that. To him. I'd like to read, um, something that I read in the Wall Street Journal, uh, last Saturday. Quote, "With climate change, it seems likely that California will have more fires, which means that every agency, every elected official, and every homeowner needs to do a better job." Agencies, elected officials, homeowners. Last week, uh, we had a meeting at, um, on Wagon Lane. Wagon Lane's a little, uh, short street right next to us, uh, and I think everybody at that meeting is here tonight. We came here en masse. This is, uh, an important issue to people on, uh, Wagon Lane. Uh, we discuss, uh, some things there, hardening the home. It's really very, very, very important. Maintaining the twenty-feet, uh, perimeter around structures. Keeping canyons clear of excess vegetations. There were three items that residents felt were beyond the scope of their capabilities. One, clearing trees on private property that could fall, trees that could fall on Wagon Lane in the event of a Santa Ana wind, which would block the only exit to Portuguese Bend Road. Residents have not, the resident that has these trees have, has not been cooperative in the past in terms of maintaining, uh, their plants. Uh, I think in this area, since it's some private property, we're gonna maybe address a new ordinance or maybe, uh, re-, uh, revive an ordinance that was talked about a couple of years ago. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Last year, a eucalyptus tree fell across Portuguese Bend Road less than a mile away from Wagon Lane, and it blocked Portuguese Bend Road for more than half a day. Three years ago, a eucalyptus tree fell on a house and caused extensive damage less than a mile away from Wagon, uh, Lane. A eucalyptus tree fell and blocked the exit of, route of John's Canyon Road about three miles from, uh, Wagon Lane, and we all remember that. It blocked the only exit, uh, that John Canyon had. Lessons learned, um, I'm, I'm a, I'm a big advocate of lessons learned, and of the previous fires that we've had, all of them have said on the lessons learned that you've got to keep your exit routes clear of excess vegetation. Something like the, uh, the, uh, the fire up in Paradise caused a lot of death and probably is gonna be the issue, one of the main issues that comes out in the Lahaina fire. We have not gotten the final lessons learned. Second, uh, we have a problem on, on, um, on, um, the canyon. Aboveground utilities could ignite a wildfire during high winds. Uh, there are some big, heavy wires there on Wagon Lane, about the size in diameter of a, a gas pump. There, there is a, um, transformer on a utility pole. If there's any kind of high wind, there could be sparks cause, could start a fire. There's some very heavy equipment there, and, and, and there should be some strong considerations to put that equipment underground. Transformer and heavy, heavy wires. Uh, the last thing that was mentioned that is beyond the control is to, uh, the sheer availability of forestry division personnel to con-, conduct assessments. There was a commitment that we're going to do more hardening the home, more clearing of the canyon, and we begin with an assessment from the forestry division. So, I just wanted to, uh, we would like to have these issues discussed at the next, make this, uh, an agenda item in the next meeting of, uh, the city council. And we would like to discuss it in, 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 uh, in detail. I don't know, some of the people here would like to, from Wagon Lane would like to talk. I'm finished. Thank you very much. We would like to ma-, make this an agenda item in the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Arun?
I'm sorry.
In the order of?
I'm sorry.
You can be after Arun, just one second, sir. After Arun, Arun, come up and then you'll be next. You're receiving. One second. Can we make a motion to receive and file the document from Mrs.?
Yes.
I make the motion. I'll say? Aye. Good evening, my name is Arun Bhumitra. I've been a resident for twenty-five years, uh, on Buggy Web.
Hold on a second. Hey, you guys mind quiet? It's hard to hear. Go ahead, Arun.
All right. And, uh, I'm feel lucky and blessed to have a great city council on the city, especially in dire moments like this. Uh, I've got, uh, three issues, actually, I'll try to condense into two. Number one, uh, you know, we have great staff and great, uh, city council, so sometimes one of you members have to go represent the city at a function, at an organization, at a meeting. So I think you got to help the people who volunteer, take their precious time, other than devoting for the residents, to go out and, uh, address meetings and all. So perhaps to make it more effective, uh, of course, you have to screen what meetings are, your reps go out to, and see what the agenda is, which, uh, everything benefits the city. Knowledge is power, so no matter when the rep goes out, they meet people, and they come up with good, uh, relationships if nothing else. So the other thing would be is to, if you want to, you know, I know budget is tight, so you want to kind of, uh, screen that and ask for a, a report what happened in the meeting. So that could be very productive, but I, I strongly urge the city council to support some of your colleagues who go out to meet and greet other cities. The second is, uh, I think we're all talking, I'm gonna echo what Mr. Visco and Mr. Hanba mentioned, is about trees. Uh, one of the issues we have is, uh, cell phone coverage, and it's very near and dear, and especially with that, uh, circumstances you have. It's very simple, cell phones work out of line of sight. The signal strength is depending upon connecting of the cellular ports around different parts. So perhaps, I don't know, it's not an easy thing, is to trim the trees, you know, to, to the ridge of the roof. I mean, now's the time to take real, get the bull by the horn and solve it with what, what's going on with the fires. You know, tomorrow, Wednesday, fifty-five miles per hour, the wind speeds out there, and, you know, we always thought that we are going to be immune to anything, but this fi-, the last week has proved to us that things are not as good, anything can go wrong. So that's one part of it, you know, the trees to the ridge of the roof, and then again, preventing the embers. Uh, as a resident, if we can, we have any assistance to work with you, and ahead of committee, I'll be happy to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Steve Milo from Nine Wagon Lane. Um, I won't take much of your time. I just wanted to reiterate some of what, um, was said earlier, but really, a little bit about the background. Obviously, the events of the last week have shocked all of us. It, it, one good thing came out is the entire Wagon Lane, all six houses up there all got together, which hadn't happened for quite a while, but it was this common, uh, fear that everybody had, and we sat and went through all of the issues that, um, and out of it came, let's go down, talk to city and see if they get an agenda item, at least to get it discussed. And, uh, like I said, I won't bore you with the, the party that went on, but there were two key issues that came out.
Yeah.
It was a good evening, by the way.
Yeah.
But there were two really safety issues that we, we focused on. The first one was trees, but it was, well, there's only one exit in Wagon Lane, big trees, they fall down, you can't leave. So we thought, well, we can get into the canyon and go out that way, and someone suggested probably not a good idea to go out on, on foot through a canyon. So raise your hand and say, is there anything we can do at least to be preempti-, take preemptive action to work, to go look at the specifics and are there things that can be done to prevent, uh, a tree falling and we can't get out in a disaster? And the second issue that came up was related to that in that, um, I don't know how it is at your house, but we have spotty cell coverage up there, but as long as we have power, you have Wi-Fi. With Wi-Fi, all the notifications will come through and we'll get them like everybody does. We've had lines go down in the past and been out without power, and you can't get hold of anybody. And so it says, okay, and that was the issue about, uh, the power lines and the trees. So, not knowing how your, how the whole system works in detail and whether even this is the right venue, but what body can we go to that will at least focus on urging the Southern California Edison people to either come look again, take a second look, I mean, they've been there, or is there anything actively we as individuals can do to get them to act to sort of protect the power lines at least during a really bad storm? So, um, the whole, our whole community, which is only five houses, not the seven hundred and forty you guys deal with, but we are very concerned, uh, we're gonna take actions on our own, we all agree to do, you know, the hardening and the tree removal and the gr-, brush. So we'll take care of ourselves, but there are things that are beyond our capabilities, so we, that's why we like to get it on agenda item, at least get discussion at a higher level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Arlene?
Arlene Hanbo, thirty-three, Portuguese Bend. Um, I'm here to, um, I have a few requests relative to the siren project. Surprise, surprise. So first of all, I want to say, I want to thank for the, uh, thank you for the email that went out from the city talking about the use of the sirens. You know, if, if needed, uh, they, they can and will be used. Uh, that is very reassuring, 'cause to me, it, it tells me that the city is very flexible. I mean, it's, hasn't been, the project hasn't been completed, there's still some issues, but you guys were proactive in trying to figure out how, how the sirens could be used. So that's, first of all, that's appreciated. Uh, that, that gave and gives some comfort to, uh, the residents. Now, uh, I know that there's gonna be a project update on the siren project in two weeks. It's on, it's going to be on the agenda. And, um, many of you know that I'm a representative, the block captain representative to the committee for the siren project. Uh, so I am aware of some of the issues that, uh, the staff has been dealing with, uh, with the vendor, the specific issue that not, not all residents are hearing the sirens during the testing, and there has been a recommendation that's going to be discussed in two weeks, uh, that the vendor HQE is proposing, uh, some in-home devices to be, to supplement the sirens. Uh, I request that the vendor HQE, uh, attend this meeting either in person or via Zoom so that, that HQE is with you when this, these items are discussed, because it's very important, as you know, when, when you are evaluating the proposal from HQE, we really couldn't make a lot of forward progress unless you had the vendor there. So that's, that's one request. Uh, the second request is that the, and I'm gonna tell you upfront so that you'll have two weeks to noodle on this. Uh, I'm gonna tell you from my perspective as being the block captain representative on this project, uh, I am not in favor of introducing another variable, uh, primarily because, you know, there are lots of logistics that are gonna have to be handled in order to deploy, you know, seven hundred and fifty-plus devices, and that's one per household. And if a household needs two or three, and then you're gonna have to figure out if they work, and is everybody installing them, and how are you gonna maintain them? I just want to encourage you to try to figure out how the original solution that was proposed by the vendor, how can we make that work? Maybe we need an extra pole or two. Maybe we need a few more speakers. Maybe we don't do the voice, you know, maybe it's just a siren, you know, bah, loud. That's really all we need. We're pretty basic. The sirens work all over the, all over the world, you know, tsunami sirens, hurricane sirens, tornadoes, we don't need anything super sophisticated, but, uh, that's, that's the position that, that, uh, I am recommending to the block captains and the residents. So just so that you know, um, I know it's your decision, um, but, you know, lots of people are gonna be at this meeting in two weeks, and, you know, that's really what I'm gonna be advocating. Uh, also, um, you, I'm sure you already know this, but the, your decision in terms of what the configuration's going to be for the, the propos-, the end, the solution that we end up with is really on the critical path. Uh, we cannot start training materials, because right now, the training, their HQ is saying, well, you know, you gotta talk about this, uh, you know, this, uh, device that's called Safe Network, you know, and I'm saying, well, you know, it hasn't even been approved. So, you know, we can't start the training materials, we can't start training the people, and as you know, the block captains feel very strongly that education to the residents is essential. We did that with hardening the home, we did that with the canyon management, you know, we institutionalize those training materials, they're on the website, so then this way, people can go and get educated. So, we can't start or finish, I mean, we can start, but we cannot finish the training materials, nor can we start our training, you know? Uh, and we could, hypothetically speaking, we could start training even though the proj- the, the, the project hasn't been completed, but, but we're not, we're not in that position. So your decision is really on the critical path, so I just, um, you know, want to say that we're all waiting for this meeting in two weeks. So lastly, um, I also want to say that, uh, you know, things are very fluid, people are very concerned. Uh, there is, as you know, Bea and Jim are on the committee for the siren project, but I, I will have to say that, you know, uh, we've never met, and notwithstanding that we've requested a meeting and review on the, uh, document, the standard operating procedures document, um, I haven't seen anything from anybody else other than my own edits or the staff's edits. So the good news may be that you really don't need a committee focused on the siren project, because, you know, my humble opinion is, is that everything that staff's doing right now, you know, they're, they're doing a pretty adequate job with the vendor. Uh, maybe, and I know this is on your agenda later on, you know, you're gonna be reviewing the committee assignments, well, maybe you, the committee might be better served to deal with, uh, you know, revisiting the, you know, nuisance ordinance, you know, for excess vegetation. Uh, maybe they should be looking at and, you know, uh, getting rid, as Mr. Visco mentioned, the high hazardous plants that are within the ten foot of the easements for the evacuation routes and the feeder streets. You know, to me, that would be a higher and better use of, of the committee, because it really does take city council members to deal with that particular issue. So, uh, I would encourage you to, you know, we all have to be flexible. I know you guys were totally busy with the landslides, you know, a month ago. were totally busy with the landslides, you know, a month ago or two weeks ago, you know, six months ago. We, we all get it, that you guys have been busy, but I'm just thinking, you know, if you're going to be revisiting these assignments, you know, maybe you don't need to be involved in certain things, but we need you to be involved in other things.
Thank you.
And we don't really respond. Just because I want you to know, that's not Bee's fault that we didn't meet, it's my fault. And it's because I had emergencies. But Bee was all set up to meet, and I want you to make sure that's, that's why we didn't meet.
I appreciate that clarification.
Anybody else? Okay, then we're gonna, hold on a second. And some of that stuff.
I have a question. Is there going to be a chance to speak later, or is this it?
No, no.
About what?
About anything on the agenda we were going to talk about. This was only for stuff not on the agenda. Okay. So I'm going to close the public comment, and we've accepted everything, right? We're all good there? Okay, then consent calendar. Any issues?
I would move the consent calendar for a second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, so now we're going to skip. Team A.
Bye. Don't leave.
We're, we're, we're actually going to talk about things that might be relevant.
Yeah, you might be interested in some of this stuff.
I want to hear some of this.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is he next?
Yes. Move it to next.
All right. Well, thank you. For those of you who decided to stick around for this, it is greatly appreciated. Mayor Piper and members of city council, this evening, staff has put together a public safety update and emergency preparedness for the recent events that have occurred in September, which really transpired as a result of the utility shut-offs, gas and power. Since then, staff has periodically been coming before city council, providing you updates on the work that we were doing with our local partners, but also neighboring agencies, jurisdictions, and our public safety partners. This evening, prior to me having Sam Crew, our management analyst and emergency preparedness coordinator, speak, and we're going to pass it on over to Chief Kane. But we thought it was really important for our chief to come before the city council to talk a little bit about what's been occurring and has transpired into the last week. Yes, Pacific Palisades is, you can see it from a far distance, but a lot of what occurred over there, it's important for our community members to know what we as an agency, the other three cities, public safety, law enforcement, and the fire department are doing to ensure that we are not being reactive, but proactive and anticipating if and when something hopefully never happens. But what we're doing, what do we have lined up in place for something like this to occur? So before I, if we can go ahead and get Chief Kane's PowerPoint presentation ready to go, I do want to add something that I, it's really important for me to share with you, is that late, this past Sunday, Ms. Crew worked as a part of the emergency operations center with the city of Malibu. As you know, the city of Malibu has experienced a significant amount of devastation because of wildfires, and Sam has been able to represent the city of Rolling Hills and assisting the city of Malibu throughout their EOC, and she'll be returning tomorrow. It's valuable training, but most importantly, what we can do to help our neighboring agencies and hopefully in the future, if anything, we can have that being paid forward. So thank you to Samantha for being able to represent the city in such an important cause. So without that being said, I'd like to ask our fire chief, Brian Kane, to come to the, the front end, present on the most recent fires that have occurred and transpired. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Piper, members of the council, member of the public, Assistant Chief Brian Kane, Los Angeles County Fire Department. I am your fire chief for the, the Palisades Peninsula. Most of you have met me before. And today, I'm going to give you a presentation on a brief overview of the two recent fires, how some of those fires and conditions relate to the peninsula, and, and just what's some terminology that you hear on the news, how, what it means and define it, and then maybe take any questions that you might have. So a lot of the things that maybe didn't go so well on these two fires, I'm going to address it as how it relates to the, to the peninsula. So this slide will come back into play later, as, when I start talking about water systems and water supply, and is there sufficient water supply or water in the peninsula? And, and this is an example of, I believe, as well as Cow Water and, and the city, that we, we are covered as it relates to water and water supply. We don't anticipate having the same issues that we saw to our neighbors from the north. And this is a helipod, and this is at 53 Alpha, just on the other side of the hill. And it's a, it's a container that just basically fills with water, and it enables our Sikorsky Blackhawks to draft or suck water right out of that helipod. And then that helipod there is attached to a fire hydrant with an assisting fire engine to make sure that it stays full to capacity at all times. And then that helicopter right there can carry 1,250 gallons per drop. And the question had come up earlier, and I'll just address it now, that if for some reason, the helipod were to go out of service, or we, something catastrophic happened in the 53 Alpha area, it can also draft right out of the ocean. So it can pick up the saltwater and, and utilize that for firefighting. It's not their number one choice, but it is something that they can do. So the Palisades fire, these stats are from this morning at 10:00 AM. So if you heard something different on the news, I apologize for not having the most recent information. But as of this morning, it was 23,713 acres. It was 14% contained. I will define what contained means later in the presentation, because that always, that's always comes up. There's 5,123 firefighters working and assigned to the incident. Currently, there's eight fatalities and 10 persons missing. The Eaton fire is currently at 14,117 acres, 33% contained, 3,408 firefighters working and 15 fatalities. So unfortunately, we probably will see the fatality numbers go up as the days progress. We bring in cadaver dogs to, to search, and anthropologists to search the scenes, to find bone fragments. The cadaver dogs are actually pretty excellent. It's amazing how they can find things in, in basically charcoled and charred pieces of homes and so forth. But they're able to find remains in those conditions. And that's how we confirm when we have a fatality in, in a certain area. So this is some of the, some of the definitions that I wanted to provide for you all, because you, you hear it on the news, and it's actually, what exactly does it mean? So there's a fire weather watch, there's critical fire weather criteria, and then there's a red flag warning. Like tonight, we're experiencing red flag once again. Red flag is coming to the South Bay area, the coastal areas, and again, once to, to our north. So a fire weather watch is when we get prepared. So it's something that happens 12 to 48 hours before the actual red flag condition takes place. A red flag warning is, okay, now we're, we're within 24 hours of a potential event, extremely, be extremely careful, of course, with your open flames, et cetera. And then critical fire weather, then we're going to fly the red flag. And what does that exactly mean? So that means our 10-hour fuel moistures are less than 10%, and our winds are greater than 15 miles an hour, and our relative humidity is 25%. So we take a measurement of live and dead fuel moistures from random brush, and we measure the, the moisture content within that fuel. And all fuel, whether it's live or dead, absorbs and releases moisture dependent upon the weather and the relative humidity. So when we get down to a fuel moisture of less than 10%, we're at critical fuel moistures, and it makes, it's, it's like kindling at that point. And then winds at 15 miles an hour, which that doesn't seem like a lot, and relative to what we've seen, it wasn't a lot. So you can see, just at that low wind speed at 15 miles an hour, we can hit that critical fire weather criteria. And in relative humidity, you know, in the coastal areas, we're, you know, we're used to 40 to 60, 80% relative humidity on a normal day. And when we get critical fire weather or red flag warning, we can see, I've seen it here even on the peninsula, you know, 10%, 9%, 12%. I was monitoring it last week, and that's what it was about in the daytime, low, low teens. And then at night, it would kick up into the 30s, and then the next morning, it would go back down into the, to the low teens once again. So that's how we, when you hear red flag, these are the numbers that come into play, and that's how we reach those warnings. So ember cast, this is what we, we all hear about, and it's what, it's what, it's actually, it's what spreads the fire. So of course, you have the wind, and the winds are pushing the embers, but the embers can reach two to three miles, and in some cases, even further in front of the advancing fire front. So with 55 to 80 mile per hour winds, it's just throwing those embers way out in front of the fire, and that's how you get such rapid rates of spread. One of the things I wanted to use this picture exactly for, this is from one of the recent fires in the Palisades, is look at the trees that you see behind you. Look at the ones that are burning, and then also look at the ones that are really responsible for the majority of the ember cast. And what's a little bit interesting about the picture is, a palm tree, everyone thinks as, it's a, it's a tropical plant. It's full of water, it's full of moisture. Palm trees are one of the worst. And you can see it illustrated here in this picture. The other, the, the larger trees around it aren't even burning, but look what the palm trees are doing. So we, there's another factor that we use, it's called the probability of ignition. And it's based on the red flag criteria and all the numbers that I previously spoke, spoke about. And we, we turned it into a burning index, and we, we create all these different calculations. But probability of ignition is the percentage of embers that are thrown in front of the advancing fire front. How many fires will each ember actually subsequently start? So when you have extreme fire weather in red flag conditions with the wind that we saw, and the live and dead fuel moistures at those critical levers, levels, you can get a probability of ignition over 90%. So that means each one, 90% of those embers that you see flying off of that palm tree are going to create another fire somewhere. Whether it's in the bush next to it, whether it's in a structure or a house, or way down two to three miles away, 90% of those embers are responsible for that rate of spread. So thi- this comes up a lot, and I, you know, you hear it on, you know, all the time on the news and, and just from people around the community, well, what is the fire department doing? It doesn't look like they're really doing anything. Well, in the initial stages of a rapidly advancing fire, such as we saw this last week, we go into these different modes of operation. And of course, the first mode is always the life mode. And the life mode is basically making sure that we can get everybody out, that we can possibly get out and evacuate appropriately. So it may not look like at the time that we're actively engaged in the firefight, but what, what, that's because we're still in that life mode. We're racing around the streets and the neighborhoods, assisting with, you know, PD to get these evacuations. We're knocking on doors, we're, we're telling everyone, it's time to go, it's time to go, it's time to go. Because it happened on this recent fire, lots of stories from my cohorts in the department, that people did not want to leave. And so when we're in life mode, that's what we're doing, we're trying to get everybody out that we can possibly get out. After that, we go into property conservation. Sometimes property conservation is, we call it fire front following, where we're actually going back in the neighborhoods after the fire front has already gone, coming back in behind it, and now we're taking care of all the structures the best that we can. Once we've done property conservation to the best that we can, now we're going to start on perimeter control. And some of these terms, especially for a fire like this, take a long time. It's not rapid succession. So you could be in life mode for the better part of a day, or, and property conservation could be the next 24, 36 hours after that. And it, it might be two days before you actually started getting to that perimeter control. So perimeter control is when we're now trying to stop the acreage, slow down the acreage that the fire is actually consuming. So we do that by getting to, obviously, to the perimeters of it. There's various methods that we use for that. The best one that you guys see on the news is the aircraft. And they're the ones that are really responsible for getting a lot of water, fire retardant and so forth, to try to stop and get that perimeter and keep it as small as we can. Once we have somewhat perimeter control, then we get to the extinguishment. So now we have some lines around it, so to speak. Now we're going back interior, and we're putting everything out that we possibly can now within the interior. When you see the acreage, you can see now why it takes so long to get some of the extinguishment done when you're talking about, you know, 15,000 acres. Just for, for, for lay terms, an acre is a football field. So if you figure 15,000 football fields connected together is what some of these fires are. And, and then after that, we go to full containment. So what you hear on the news is the fire is 0% contained. Well, it means something, but at the same time, it really doesn't mean a lot, because containment is one of the final things that we actually achieve. That is when you have a line, you have either hose, dozer line, or crew cut line completely around the fire. So once again, a fire that is, you know, 25,000 acres, how long does it take to get a line completely around that fire? So some of these fires, it could take weeks for us to get containment. So, but the news always reports on containment, which is a little frustrating, but that's what they do. So then wildfire terms. So we have control, where the fire is no longer advancing, it's no longer getting bigger. We talked about containment, is the fire is completely surrounded by fire line. And then the final, final thing is when we have knockdown. And that means there's no visible flame within the fire perimeter. That's knockdown. Okay, I was getting some calls on this, and rightfully so. It's like, how do, how do we flex all of our resources and personnel? How do we achieve having hundreds of firefighters at the fire and still maintain staffing here in the peninsula? So what we did was, we, we always have one shift on and two shifts off. So we went to a two-shift model. So two shifts were working for every one day. We have one, one shift, or one-third of our personnel, and the LA County Fire Department has roughly 3,500 personnel. So one-third of the personnel was up at the two fires. Two-thirds personnel were back rotating every other day for staffing within the fire stations. So, and then, I just lost my train of thought. So that's how we made, oh, we have a, is a tremendous fleet of reserve fire engines. So when you see the parades of fire engines that are just making their way up to the north to attack these fires, in, in Los Angeles, we have our reserve fleet, which is housed at our fire shops, and some local stations around here have a reserve engine on site. So those recalled personnel come back now and staff those unstaffed reserve apparatus, and then those apparatus go out under service within the cities. So in the, in the initial stages of the, of the firefight, we had 68, well, we have 172 fire stations in total for Los Angeles County. At the, at the height of the incident, on the first day, we had 68 stations that were either dark or dim. A dark station means there's no fire apparatus added. A dim station means there's one fire apparatus or a paramedic squad there, and there's one missing. And we were able to get that down to only eight dark or dim stations with one 24-hour operational period. So our coverage here on the, on the hill did not suffer at all, based on some of these, how we're able to reflex the department. And then if there is, there wasn't any dim or dark stations on the peninsula, because it's a very hazardous fire zone. But down the hill in Carson, Longdale, Gardena, Lomita, and some of those stations, we had dark and dim stations. But if we're going to get a first alarm assignment to anywhere on the peninsula, we're still going to get the required rigs that we're going to get, they're just going to trickle out a little bit further away. Okay, so this is a big one right here. So we, we've all seen and heard about some of the, the issues with the water systems on the, on the Palisades incident. DWP relies on three of these big giant tanks that you see here, that are 1 million gallons each. They're for both domestic and emergency use. The, the demand that the incident placed on the water system couldn't be maintained with the tanks that they had in place and the systems that they had in place to refill the tanks. So basically, what I'm saying is, we were drawing more water from the system via the tanks than the supply system into the tanks could provide. So that's what the issues with the tanks were. So so our water system up here from Cow Water, we do, we do have water tanks and some other types of systems, but they're not relied upon for emergency use or domestic supply. So we have a redundant system where we're getting our water inputted from multiple, multiple directions and multiple feeds, just to prevent an issue such as this. So this is the other one we, we've seen on the news. Unfortunately, this is a 117-million-gallon reservoir that was in the Palisades area that has been out of service for more than a year. So, yeah. So so here's some more.
It was out of service.
Pardon me?
Tell them why it was out of service.
I don't know why it was out of service. I don't know why it was out of service.
There's a tear in the cover.
Yeah.
There was about a ten thousand dollar repair.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, okay, keep going, keep on working.
Okay, yeah. So this is some information that I, I spoke with Cow Water this morning and, you know, we had a conversation. Some of this stuff I already knew, but I just wanted to make sure that I could confirm it. But thi- this is, this is a synopsis of how the fire department, the local cities and, and Cow Water work together to make sure that the peninsula is covered with water at all times. Even during extreme conditions where fire apparatus are, are hooked up to all the hydrants and, and pumping away from it. So, um, there's been a lot of co- collaboration between all of us. I mean, you have, you, you saw the helipod this morning, that's the dip helicopter dip tank. Um, there's been a seven mile long, uh, Palace Bridge Peninsula Wal- Water Reliability Project that was completed in twenty twenty and so forth and so forth and ma- in different pump stations and hardening structures for the pump stations and redundant pump stations and so forth to help against anything that we might encounter should a wildfire like that take place here. Here's some more, um, that, that Cow Water is doing, it's, it's a lot of words, I won't read it all, but I'll, I'll leave it, leave it up here for a minute for you guys to read if you'd like. But this is just more redundancy that, that Cow Water has, has done. It has already completed on, on the peninsula and the surrounding areas to make sure that the water systems within the area are, are adequate for both domestic and emergency use, regardless of the demands that we put on the system. So our fire apparatus, uh, one fire engine is capable of pumping fifteen hundred GPMs per minute. So you can imagine you have hundreds of fire engines now hooked to a system, it's, it's going to put a strain on it. Um, and that's what we saw in the Palisades. But with the redundant systems up here and the, the feeding of water from, from multiple directions and sources, it, it should be adequate to sustain anything that the fire department could give the, the, the system up here on the peninsula. So we saw some issues with evacuations. Um, I'm, I'll, I'll get to a good picture, some of the, one that we saw on the news here in a minute. But I just want to, I just want to reemphasize the importance of the Genesis system and to ensure that everyone in, in the area is familiar with it and knows, and knows how to use it for a couple of different reasons. One is for your own safety, of course. I mean, if your, if your respective zone is called, then that's when it is time to get in your car and go. So hopefully your go-bag is ready and so forth, and tha- that's your time. The other thing about this, about Genesis is, um, if your zone is not called, that, that doesn't necessarily mean, well, I'm going to go just in case. Because one of the things that we saw in in the Palisades was the road systems could not handle the amount of cars that were trying to leave the respective neighborhood. And we saw a gridlock scenario. The, the, the police force made a command decision to tell everybody to park their cars and just, and then just leave the area, which, once again, life mode is priority, of course, right? But now this creates a, another problem, right? So the other problem is more evacuees. And then from my perspective, the big problem is how do we get enough fire apparatuses in? Okay, so that's why we called in the dozer and then our street was subsequently opened in quick, uh, in quick fashion. But, so evacuations, it nee- it needs to be controlled, it needs to be systematic. And, um, hopefully the public will trust the, the, the decision makers that when your zone is called, that's when it's time to go. If your zone is not called, that, that, that kind of means wait for your turn, so we can avoid something kind of like this. So just another slide, so a coordinated effort between both fire department and law enforcement and the public will be crucial for the pro- process to succeed. So, um, the stakeholders will be at the command post, myself, some of this from the city, potentially from Office of Emergency Management and, and of course, the Sheriff Department. And then we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at the fire weather and the predicted fire weather behavior. And we're gonna pick a zone and we're gonna say, this is the, this is the zone. And then the Sheriff Department is then going to execute that. And then the Office of Emergency Management will be articulating that on the Genesis application with their, the coding that they do and sending out those alerts via most of the social medias, AM radios and so. So, you know, evacuation routes is, is a tricky one, right? Because we don't know where the fire is going to start, we don't know the wind direction for the given day is going to actually be. And it's difficult to say a hard and fast rule, okay, this is the way that we're going to evacuate. So the best thing here is to, to know what the evacuation gates, routes actually are. And then wait for the evacuation notice to come, to give you the directions on which route is going to be the best one to take for both safety and for, um, ease of you exiting and also to be the quickest way. Because one of the things in some of these areas like was previous discussed from some of the other issues is, is access and egress, right? So just as we need you guys to egress, we need a way to get in. So if everybody's exiting out the same way, or if they're exiting, exiting on multiple ways, then where are we supposed to come in?
Right.
So.
Would you comment on these?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, yes.
Could you comment on these fall trees here?
Yeah, so, okay, I, I apologize for that, yeah. So anything else, that, that's all I was going to say, I, I think on these. But, um, there is a plan in place for, you know, how the, how the, the gates are going to open, which gates are going to be open. The plan is to open all of them, even the ones that are the chain link ones. Um, and then we're going to be, we'll be coming up with, with routes and egress and ingress to, to make sure that both, you know, the residences in can get out and the, and the fire apparatus can get in. Okay, this is another one that's, I think I might have spelled that wrong, uh, come up, is, is the, is, is the Burma Trail a viable egress or evacuation route? I don't, I don't know where this came from, but it, it has a question, it is a question that's come across my desk a couple of different times, as well as, as other trail systems within the peninsula area. So, uh, my answer to that is no, it's not a viable route. I tried to find out today if it's even connected, once again, from top to bottom, I couldn't get confirmation on it. But myself, as an incident commander, wouldn't send anybody down that road as far as a viable evacuation route. So the fire department will not condone any use of this or any of the other trail systems for any kind of evacuation. And that's the end of the presentation I have today as it relates to the peninsula and anything that's recently taken place to the north of us. Unless I'm open for any, any kind of questions.
Hold on, hold on a second. Pat, you anything?
Reserve the right to come back.
Okay.
No, thank you for everything.
You're very welcome. I, I hope this answered some of your questions, yeah.
It was quite good. Would you feel that perimeter containment would be a better, uh, term than they use versus? Because I hear all these on the news all the time about containment. And you can see that there's no smoke, and there's no flames, and there's an ocean on one side. And it makes the fire people look like liars because clearly
Yeah.
that's, and, and is that just because they're using the wrong terminology?
Yeah, I think it's just easy for them, they just contain, it's contained or it's not contained. You know, but, but you're right, like, like today, if you, if you, if you went to, and I was up at a very good vantage point looking both the Palisades direction and the Eaton Fire direction. And it's perfectly crystal clear today, there's no, not a, any smoke in the air, but we're at low containment levels.
Right.
So I think it does con- confuse the public, you're right.
That makes you guys look like liars.
Right, and that's, and, well, and the other way, it's like, okay, well, what are they doing? It's only, it's zero percent contained, what are they doing there? But it, but that has nothing to do with the initial firefight.
So we should try to use, what terminology should we try to use when we talk to our residents and people?
So, I mean, the ones, I mean, it's like, it's contained, which we already talked about. There's, there's control, and control means it's no longer getting bigger. That's, that's, that's the big one, so.
So perimeter control, what you showed there, is that the word?
Well, control of the fire means it's no, not longer getting bigger.
Right.
Perimeter control is, that's when we're actively trying to get a fire line completely around it.
So after you've got it around is control?
That's control.
So we should look at control, not contain?
Yeah.
Thanks.
And then no visible fire would be, the fire is knockdown. But the other thing is, the fire department will not call knockdown until we have containment. So we don't see any fire, but it's not contained technically, so we won't call knockdown.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to ask because there, I, I had been familiar with all of our great capacity to scoop water out of the ocean and use it to douse out flames. And here Pacific Palisades is on the ocean, I don't understand why they didn't use that kind of an apparatus. It seemed like
Okay, so.
that could have ameliorated things, I mean, other than the wind conditions that occurred initially.
There's a couple of different things. So our super scoopers, the, I didn't put a picture of those, that's the fixed wing aircraft, the ones that come from Canada, they're yellow and red. They're the ones that scoop out of the ocean. And they were scooping rap, you know, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. They're limited on wind speed. So when wind speed exceeds, I think it's forty to fifty-five miles an hour, it limits their ability to be effective. And the biggest part of that is, they can still fly in those wind speeds, but what happens when they release the water? So a fixed wing aircraft drops water at a much higher elevation than a rotorcraft. But you drop, um, a load of water at, you know, a, a few hundred feet with fifty to sixty mile an hour wind, it just blows the water right out of it, I mean, it doesn't even hit the ground. And so that's why in, in some of the initial stages, and when the fire really seemed like it was roaring, you didn't see any aircraft, was because they weren't effective and it was too dangerous.
And, and in terms of evacuation, because we have two lane roads, are you saying that we should never evacuate on both lanes to get people out?
So I don't want to say never.
Okay.
I would say that it, it, we definitely need to make sure that we're evacuating in a systematic fashion and very controlled to make sure that we can meet the, the, the capacities of the road systems in order to eliminate any kind of, um, situations like we saw up there with being just locked in. Yeah, and that's going to be a challenge. I'm not going to make it sound like it's not, it, it's going to be a challenge. And, and then like we spoke earlier today about was time of day. Time of day is going to be extremely important on how we do those evacuations. Because how is this road at three PM on, on a weekday? It's already at max capacity or beyond max capacity. So now, what's our alternative? How do we mitigate that issue? So that's another, it's another piece of the puzzle. So sometimes evacuating effectively might be going to a further exit. You know, how they, they always say that when you're on an airplane, the, the best way to exit the airplane may, may be the exit that's further away from you or the one behind you. It could be a situation like that. So that's why it's very hard for me to say, you know, this is what we're going to do or this is the plan. Because ju- it's just very dependent on the incident, where it starts, how it's moving and so forth.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right, so this is what we're going to do, hang on.
Jeff, Jeff, I, I do have a question. Um, I've had some residents bring to my attention some concerns. Um, one of them was a, a apparent homeless person living in one of the canyons. And, but more importantly, um, there's a vacant lot in my neighborhood where, um, I don't know if you can see it from where you're sitting, but there's a propane tank and a little portable fire pit. Somebody's brought on site and, uh, you know, people obviously, uh, using that area. I mean, I know we can report that to Sheriff's Department, but is there anything, you know, any?
A concern like that with an open burning in that propane tank and it's, it's an open lot that's not like a deeded or parcel or anything like that?
It's a parcel.
It's a vacant lot.
It's a ba- it's vacant?
There's no, uh, development.
It's owned by somebody, it's just not developed.
Yeah, and, and is the owner the one that's using that equipment?
No.
No.
No, so, that, that I would say if, if, if legally with the, with the city and the Sheriff's Department and if, if you guys are comfortable with asking my guys to pick it up, have fifty-sixes go down there and, and, and pick it up, I'd be fine with that. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, um.
There's, there's no reason for it to sit there if.
Well, one of the residents picked it up.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
There was some self-help going on there, but, uh, I mean, like I said, I know we can contact the Sheriff's Department, but it's just.
We'd be happy to assist with that as well. We'd be happy to assist with that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, good, Pat? Okay, then I'm just going to ask you just to decide for a second.
Sure.
We're going to get, we're going to open the public comment, we're going to write down what people are going to say because we're not going to make this to an ongoing conversation because
Yeah.
we're going to just try to answer your questions while he's still here. So could you mind hanging for a little bit longer?
No, no problem, yeah.
Perfect, then take a seat. Very, oh, she's. And just, uh, we get you recorded.
Okay, first of all, okay, yeah. Marion Visco, first of all, I want to thank Chief Kane for a very excellent presentation and giving us some information. And another, I'd like to, uh, obviously, we're not an island here, we're a whole peninsula. And I'm hoping that you will be contacting all the other cities and the city managers and so on, so. But there are also a couple unincorporated areas on a peninsula, and I don't know what kind of a representation they have. And so, and I would also, so we need to be able to some- somehow include them because they're right next door to us. And fires don't know any bad boundaries, as we all know. The other thing I would like to say is that hopefully, that we will actually even this year seriously make the z- zone area from zero to five an ember resistant zone. It has not been that such, even though five years ago, the state had made that a requirement. But as of last year, your chief, Maroni, said he would not do it. So I would really encourage all of, I mean, for your sake, for our sake, that we make that a fire and, and ember resistant zone. And then while I'm on it too, the city does have ordinances, the city does have ordinances about dead vegetation. So all our people are, should be reporting if, after they've taken the dead vegetation off their area. You know, if they see it, say something, bring it up to the city.
Thank you very much. Sorry, we're.
Hi, Judith Haynal, three one Eastfield Drive. So first of all, thank you for being here, I had no idea you were going to be here. So I'm going to try to get through this without crying because I have so many friends that lost their places. And, um, it's really hard to witness. And everybody's going about their lives like nothing's happened in other neighborhoods, but it's so devastating in other places. And so one of the things I wanted to know is if you're going to come to the annual meeting we're having. Okay, great, so I have some really, really quick questions to ask. It's really good to know about the aircraft, oh, sorry, can I?
Yeah, just, just, we're going to list them off and then you can answer them.
So first of all, it was really great to know about the aircraft speed and stuff and why they couldn't get to the ocean. I mean, to watch houses I knew go into the ocean. I wanted to know if the Genesis is the same as Watchduty? No? Oh, okay.
Just, just, okay.
It's an app that, you know, like hundreds of thousands of people went on right away, so. Um, and it lists all the different zones and stuff, but it's very confusing if you really don't know your zone to know what to do. Um, so that's a really big thing to try to make sure that residents really know their zone, because I don't even know my zone. So, and I'm pretty active and stuff. Yeah, I'm sorry?
It's confusing.
It is very confusing, I mean, I wish they could just go by street names. I wanted to know if in other towns, like there was recently a fire that was detected by AI, do we have that on the peninsula?
Yes.
We do, okay, great. Folks that stay behind and fighting fires, you hear about all these great heroic stories that people stayed behind and saved houses and like, why are they doing that? You know, I mean, but then you hear that they saved houses, even with a, with a house hose.
Died too.
But then they die, so yes, I know. So that's the other thing, like, how do you really get it across to people and stuff? I'm sure some of you heard the story about James Wood that he had to evacuate and he knew his neighbor, he thought his neighbor was in the hospital, but it turns out his neighbor had Alzheimer's and was sitting in a garden room just staring out the window. So they got, because he had to evacuate, he found someone else to go, and then they found this old man, just, so they saved a life, thank goodness. I was curious about, um, toxic material that after a fire, how long does it take to have toxic materials checked? Because you can't even get a permit or anything until they clear that. And they have to clear whole communities. Today, they started talking about how do you rebuild a whole community? Is it independent contractors or is it just somebody comes in and builds everything? And I, I lived in a house that I moved a year before it burnt down in the Woolsey Fire. Just today, my landlord settled with Edison, just today. Partly because they didn't believe I lived in a unit in this big house. They thought it was a basement and they refused to acknowledge it. They thought it was a basement and they refused to acknowledge it. So it's just crazy that it took six years. And I'm not looking at you to blame you for any of this. The other day, I went out the gate, the Eastfield Gate, and they were, there were fire trucks and an ambulance and some, an ambulance in somebody's driveway, two fire trucks coming up towards Eastfield. So it was one lane each way. And that was just in a few minutes, it got backed up. So, you know, even on a street that has two-way, you know, what do we do? So that's why there's so much concern about this closed gate where it's only one lane, so. Um, which I know is a subject because the, the associate, the last association meeting, they talked that they are getting bids to remove the vegetation in that second lane. Did you guys know that?
Yep.
You did, okay, good. And, um, I mean, I probably have ten other questions to ask and stuff, but this was a great presentation and if we can just get it out to more people and stuff, so. And especially about the eucalyptus trees and the palm trees and stuff, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the time.
Jean, we're getting to you. Jean wasn't the first one.
Jean Nineteen, Southfield, thank you so much for your wonderful presentation. It was certainly, uh, great to hear that our water supply wouldn't be as risky as theirs. And we really appreciate the fact that the, the department kept people in the peninsula during this high fire risk time. The city is not responsible for clearing the easements. That's a, an association problem. But have you, um, have you ever been through the smaller roads in Rolling Hills? Because I cannot even imagine on some of the roads that a, a fire engine could even make it. I mean, they're extremely tight. You'd be backing up, you wouldn't even have space to turn around. And there are actual structures built along roads within that ten-foot, you know, so. So I would just wonder after this if there'll be a time where, street by street, someone could actually assess whether or not, um, a, a, a truck could get in there. And, and since embers fly, my concern is that even if you're on a block that's wide enough, like mine is, where most of the easements are cleared, like mine, you're still going to be more vulnerable if there are streets near you, like Flying Maine and the ones above me, which do not have easements cleared and they're not very wide. So I hope after this disaster, um, Rolling Hills could continue to look at that with the help of the Fire Department.
Thank you very much. Arlene?
I won't be long, Jean, I promise. So, um, the hazardous materi, hazardous plants, the high hazard, uh, plants that have been defined by the Fire Department, I mentioned earlier that I think that it would be worthwhile for all the high hazard, uh, trees and plants to be removed from the easement, the ten-foot easements. Now, I know that the council, the, um, Community Association is responsible for the easements, but from a public safety perspective, I think it has to be endorsed by the, the city council. In line with that, you know, I am focused on evacuation. So the, uh, the, the question I have on top of that is how can the city work with the other cities to talk about the evacuation routes? We, we, we have always talked about, you know, the backups on the, on the outside of Rolling Hills, always, but we said we wanted to get, we wanted to get our home, our own home in order first, you know, deal with the evacuation routes in the feeder streets and then we'd move out to the other cities. Well, I think we have to, you know, they, they have high hazardous plants all along, outside in Rolling Hills Estates and RPV and Pancho, you know, Rancho PV, you know, and I don't think they're as aggressive as we are, but I really do think that that's the other thing that, you know, has to be talked about with the other cities. What are they doing on the evacuation routes? You know, PV Drive East, you know, PV Drive North, uh, North, I mean, you know, and Crenshaw. I mean, because everybody's going to be going out and there's high traffic, to your point, anyway. And there's a bunch of the, these high hazard plants, you know, pampas grass that they, they, that they plant. So, I mean, you know, people need to get with the program.
All right, Jean.
Jean.
And thank you, Chief. I'll follow the rules. I have two questions. Number one, what are the three most important things as homeowners we can do for prevention? And we are in the prevention mode. That's question number one. Question number two, could you, uh, go back to the entrance of the city, that, that one slide? I have a question about. There, there were a lot of trees at the, at the gate there. And I like your, your opinions about those trees at the most important exit route that we have. That's all.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, then, Chief, come back up here. All right, but we get, some of these you're not going to answer because you're not going to answer them. But a couple of things here is, just so you know, the AI cameras that saw the fire, there was a fire over here in Harbor City. When I sent a picture of the fire, which the smoke had just started to Karina, she said that she was getting information from the AI cameras that there was a fire and it wasn't here. So that happened really well. I mean. Yeah, but it, from my standpoint is, I knew it worked, but now I actually saw it work in real time and I was like, wow, okay, that actually worked really well. The zero to five is a political battle that has nothing to do with us in this room in the sense that, uh, California has to decide how they're going to implement that. Staying behind, people just do. And sometimes it works and sometimes you die. So you got to decide if what's worth to you or not worth to you. The toxic materials is forever. It'll take them forever to clean up the mess that's in those canyons. The easement spacing is going to be, when we start talking about what we're going to do in the next meeting when we talk about these things, is going to be talked about. And, um, we had somebody else, uh, online asked, does the Fire Department have egress routes that they recommend to us? And if you do, are you sharing them with the city?
Okay, so I think this goes back a little bit to the evacuation plan.
Yeah.
And then it's going to be like, like I was saying, a lot of it's going to be incident driven. And it's going to be, you know, we're going to have to be ahead of it based on the advancing fire front, of course. But where the incident originates, the direction that it's going, the speed in which it is going and where we think it's going to end up is going to be dictating what evacuation, evacuation routes that we recommend. So, and also that's going to dictate the zones that we recommend evacuating and also the zones that we want to shelter in place and wait for evacuations. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, I think so. All right, do you have any other questions that we're not on, not comment on? Yeah, go ahead, you first and then we're going to.
You had asked a question about.
I'd like to have his comments on those trees.
Yeah, so the, the, the trees are big and I, and I, and probably the concern here is if the trees were to fall in, in the roadway and inhibit people from getting out but, and, and also inhibit people from going in. And like, I, all I can say is it's a possibility. It, it's one of those things that it may or may not happen. It's going to be based upon, it, it's difficult to see what's, I'm not ultra familiar with that. You know, how wind sheltered are these trees? Are they, are they fully exposed to the brunt of a, of a northeasterly wind or a west, a southwesterly wind? I mean, the likelihood of them falling down? And I think in, is, is there any history of them falling down, like, in the past? And then another thing that goes into play a little bit with some of the trees is, is the condition of, of the soil, of course. And they're more, a tree is more likely to fall when the soil is extremely wet after a tremendous amount of rain. So, and we, we typically don't get, uh, fire weather or those severe fire winds after significant rainfall. So I, I would just say that I, I see the concern and it's definitely something that is possible. Yeah, three important things for prevention. So, I mean, I've been here for almost a year now and we've, we've continued to talk about the Ready, Set, Go program and everything that is contained within the Ready, Set program as it, as it relates to brush clearance, abatements and so forth. So that's probably, uh, number two. I would say number one would be going back to that is understanding Genesis, understanding, uh, what your cues would be to evacuate and then having your go bag ready for that set evacuation if, if we were to call on you to evacuate. And then I think number three to that was, uh, your Ready, Set, Go program and your brush clearance and abatement is only as good as your home hardening is. So of course, within our, within our LACounty.org, a website, you can find all about home hardening and what to do to your home to prevent some of those embers from reaching a source of ignition or under your house or in the attic or in the eaves or in some of the foliage around the home, et cetera. So I think the three answers would be a go bag, be ready to evacuate, know when, know how. Um, really understand and get your, your, your home and yourself ready for the Ready, Set, Go program. And then follow that up with, uh, the home hardening advice from our website.
Okay, you had something?
And I just wanted to say that regarding the comment about peninsula-wide addressing evacuation routes, there is a peninsula-wide committee. All of the cities work, uh, we're working on a hazard mitigation plan for the entire peninsula. And that will be a component of that. And it's all the things that the peninsula does together besides just the individual cities where the impacts everything. And we're in the process of working on that right now.
Can I ask one last question?
Yep, yep.
Again, Ben.
Sure.
So you have told us that the water is not a concern or it's, you've got a lot of redundancy. I just want to make sure one more time because we do, as you know, have an empty reservoir sitting at PV Drive East and PV Drive North. And after this one here, it's going to look very bad. And I know it's not you guys, but we have not pressured them at all to fix it. And should we as a city, would that be any advantage at all to have a big giant reservoir? Because, you know, we've got an empty reservoir sitting.
You could tell them helicopters all day long and that thing.
Right, yeah.
So I, I don't, all I know about your reservoir is that, yes, of course, it is out of service. I, I spoke to Cal Water about the reservoir and they've assured me that that reservoir is, is not vital to the, the public safety and/or water supply for the peninsula. So that was decking from the water company this morning because I was asking questions about that actual, because I drive by it all the time, too.
Right.
The other thing that I will tell you is that, um, all LA County Fire stations are responsible for checking and maintaining all of the fire hydrants. So in the month of March, we operate, manipulate, all, exercise all of the fire hydrants.
We'll take all around.
All around. So we're making sure that they're, they're, we do a bunch of different things to see, to make sure that they're very well maintained, to make sure that they have a proper clearance around them so our firefighters can access them. And to make sure that we can get all the caps off because they do get frozen on or painted on sometimes. And then to make sure that all the valves are exercised and work. And obviously to make sure if there's water in there. And we, we do find them sometimes that, you know, the, the water company was, you know, doing some maintenance on a given hydrant and they just, because there's two valves. There's a valve in the street that actually can turn a hydrant off. So sometimes they do some maintenance on a given hydrant and then they, you know, the crew just forgets to turn it back on. And then when we go out and do our checks in March, we find, oh, this one's turned off and we call the water department and they come back and they turn it on. So we do that once a year. Every, every hydrant within Los Angeles County gets tested.
All right, hey, we're going to have another one of these meetings in two weeks. Okay, so, and just, just to end this here, again, thank you very much for coming. The one thing I want to say to everybody in this room is, because I've gotten a lot of phone calls, I know everyone here has gotten a lot of phone calls, is after the Paradise Fire, we've done a lot of things. We have a dead tree ordinance to try to get people to get rid of the dead trees. We looked at expend, extending how far the Fire Department checks on what that is. The Fire Department was not interested in helping us go further, which, that's not on you, uh, do what that is. We've done, uh, there's chip between us and HOA, there's free chipping all the time, there's free green waste, there's unlimited trash can green waste, which is twice a week. You can get rid of everything if you want to get rid of everything. The sirens, we did the videos. The videos were on how to harden and how to maintain your, uh, property. I know the HOA cleared the top of Portuguese Bend and Crest to show how it could look. Now, it was not up to them to maintain it, so who knows? We've done a grant where we got money from the government to clear a canyon on the other side. We've spent a bunch of money and nothing's been cleared because we're in the process. It is re, nothing, nothing has happened, it's ridiculous. But we have, we've signed up for another one, which we postponed because it seems like nothing's happening in our favor over there. We're going to talk about this more. The last time we went through this, we started working really hard on aggressively pushing beyond what we're already talking about. And the amount of people who came and made this the most unruly, unfriendly, horrible environment was unbelievable. You're not chopping down my tree, you're not clearing my canyon, you're not, you're not, you're not. And it was horrible.
You had seventeen meetings.
Seventeen meetings trying to improve fire safety and the residents of this city stopped it from happening. So we're going to keep moving forward as best we can and we're going to pick this thing off and we're going to try to narrow it down to maybe this and that because obviously evacuation routes should be on the top of the list. And, um, and to me, getting rid of, but pine, uh, palm trees, eucalyptus trees? I started counting, I live on eucalyptus, that's the name of my street. Okay? I started counting eucalyptus trees. It is staggering. Now, in my house, I have two acres and I guarantee there's not a single eucalyptus. My wife just chopped them all down. We're going to be more aggressive in the blue newsletter and stop being nice about it. We're going to start saying, save your family, get rid of eucalyptus trees and, and palm trees because those are the number one and number two worst trees to have. So we're going to try to be more aggressive about that and see if we can move stuff. We're going to stick this on the next agenda to figure out what can we do? But without your guys' help, it's going to get bogged down again because the people who are going to show up who don't want to spend the money are unaware or don't care or, and I've been doing my own little polling and I've been surprised on people that I would have assumed, well, of course they're on board. Well, you're not going to chop down my pine tree, are you? Right, this kind of conversation. And we are government. It is the slowest moving, painful process you've ever seen. We have a house on Eastfield. How long, I don't know how long that thing's been unbuilt and sitting there as a death trap, but we can't seem to get that across the finish line because we have to go through the California legal process to get us there. It is ridiculous. And these are the things we're dealing with. It takes forever. So wagon, to me, great job. They, they can get everything on their street cleaned up and then everyone on Open Brand and everyone on whatever. We can name these streets all day long. If you can get your stuff done, then we can figure out how to solve the roadblocks versus trying to solve the entire problem. Because the entire problem is massive on every single one of these things. So that's in my speech. We're done with this one. Thank you very much for coming. Stay safe out there. We're now going to go on to.
Do we need a motion receiving file? Okay, go ahead.
All right, now we're going to go to fourteen B.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor.
This item is before you this evening at the request of Mayor Protem Derringer and per discussions had at recent meetings in December. The staff report lays out a few, few important aspects. One, what is the remaining budget in the city council expense? And then, um, what are the requests by Councilmember Derringer to this body to approve for using up those monies to attend future conferences between now and, now and June thirtieth, as the mayor had requested in December? With that said, I'll leave it up to Councilmember Derringer to, uh, to have any further discussion with you.
Okay, so essentially, um, the, um, representation here on the staff report are mostly estimates, although, um, the airfare round trip for the Public Safety Committee in January and, and the parking is not estimated, it's actual cost. But this is going to be less than the five thousand dollar limit that the council set for a budget for this fiscal year. Um, and it includes paying for a Cal City's annual conference that takes place in October because the early bird fee usually comes in in June. But it's going to relate to a conference that's actually. that's actually after the fiscal year. And as you know, since 2013, I have been the, the delegate of the city to all of these conferences. I have learned an incredible amount of information and gained collaborations with other cities, with Board of Supervisors, with regional people, and also state representatives. And that has helped me understand some of the things that could affect our city and be able to plan against any problems and to make sure we're, we're thinking of those when issues come up during our, our city council meetings. So I, I believe these are very definitely informational meetings that would be important to continue to learn about, I think particularly given what we've just talked about with the fire safety issue and the things that happened in other communities this past week. There's going to be an increased emphasis on fire safety and on ways in which, looking at what's happened in the Palisades and in Altadena and other places, how can we best prevent that? And those are things our city needs. So we need to be there at the table, we need to be there at those conferences, getting that information, finding out and being at the forefront of any grants that they're going to make available for, for prevention, because the onus is on the state, you know, to undo, to make sure that these issues are taken care of. And obviously, that's very important for our city. So I would ask the council to consider that. There's also, which is not in here, but in April, there's going to be a Cal Cities meeting that where they, they have all of the bills that the legislature has proposed already by that time, so the legislative session will have been completed as far as when you can put in bills. And that's a time for Cal Cities as a whole to be able to go to representatives in Sacramento and actually make pitches to say if there's legislators that have bills related to fire safety or public safety, things that are really of concern to our community, we can gather en masse with other representatives that are up there to make a, a force contingent to say, we need this to be passed, or we need some amendments to be made, or this type of things, or things that are not helpful, we need to post them. So those are helpful as well. And that would probably add another thousand to $1,500. But I think it's important as many of us to come to these meetings, and, and I, I really feel the value is very great for our city to be able to get the information and continue the relationships and collaborations with other, other representatives that go to these conferences.
Pat, do you have any comment?
Do you have any questions?
Questions, questions or comments? If you want to.
No questions.
I just have a question. So we've budgeted $301,800 left, is that correct? We have $30, $3,018 budgeted.
Uh, $5,000 budgeted, $3,018 left.
Okay. And so this is all budgeted, but this is for everybody, but now we want to direct it to B and to possibly add more if Pat needs to do something, is that correct?
That would be at the discretion of the body.
And now, and we're asked, are we going to ask, do we, is someone going to need to make an amend, a motion? What, what's happening? So when, when hearing the information, I don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, so what happened before was B had gone and we didn't have any list before. So she had spent her $1,000, and then we got there and she had already spent the next $1,000.
Okay.
Right? And we didn't have a list of it. So I gave her my $1,000 because I'm not going to any of these things.
Right.
Right? So that's how we got to where we are right now. She now wants to go to these other ones. And so right now, we have budgeted $5,000. And so is, in my mind, if you're planning on go things or spend things, or whatever that's going to be, but that's how we got to here and how we go to this. Because there's two things, is, are, is there really value in all of these things? Let me start over again. If B goes, she should be reimbursed. If anyone goes, they should be reimbursed, no matter who that is. I have no problem with that statement. The question is, what is the value we're getting from these things when we're a city that has very limited budget and we have a landslide and brush clearing and fire and all those other things to deal with? So that's the question here. B wants to go to all these things, which adds up to basically $5,000. And then Pat might want to go to something, and I don't know if Leah wanted to go to something.
And, and I would point out, these are the things I've been doing basically since 2015, of all of these activities. So this is not something new that I just started. I just wanted to clarify that. And, and it wasn't until recently that there was some question about the value, because I have been bringing in things when I say, hey, does that affect that? I ask Mr. Donigan things that I see that are legally a possible problem based on things I'm learning in these, these seminars and, and conferences, which I feel is helpful.
All right. Are you pointing to Karina?
Yes, I was going to say, your question was, a question was asked about how we go about the next steps is, we would just, appropriate funds to be allocated for this account so that Councilwoman, Mayor Protam Derringer can attend the conferences, so.
Okay. Now I got, all right. I'm going to open the public comment. Anyone have a public comment? Come on up.
And there were letters in the blue folder. Eight, eight letters.
Yeah, a lot of letters.
I'm going to get one that sends out from my friends and say, I should get a pay raise.
You should get it doubled.
Mike Shuttle, 24 Eastfield Drive. Marsha would be here, but she doesn't feel well.
I'm sorry.
Now, first of all, I want to thank B for, for what she's done, because we need, we are not an independent entity on an island. We're in a large community with other organizations, cities that have more services and more people working on different things. So her going there enables us to learn from what they're doing, and I think it's wonderful. I, I also think it would be wise to have somebody else go with her, frankly, because it takes two people to really work a situation. And, but I think it's essential, because we are not an island, we're part of a larger community, we could learn from just like with these fires, we could learn a lot about how to present, prevent that. I think it's wonderful we had the fire chief, that was a great, great, thank you so much. But anyhow, I'm strongly, if you support B on this, and maybe have somebody that wants to do it not just once in a while, but somebody that can go with her on many of these places. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Judith Hanell, 31 Eastfield. Can you clarify, are you trying to decide whether to let her have the rest, the $5,000 or to lower the amount, or what, what, what do you, yeah?
Right, currently, right now, there's $5,000 in our budget for doing things. And those are things you can, and each one of us gets $1,000 to do anything you want.
Then that makes up the $5,000.
That makes the $5,000 up. So if I wanted to go to a thing, I go to a thing, and if I...
That's the same thing. Then that's the $5,000.
Anything.
That's why we waste up the $5,000.
$5,000 is, each person's that way, and no one has to keep coming back and asking the question. The issue right now is, B goes to all the things, and, right? And we can discuss or not discuss their, how much value or not value, or whatever that means, but that's part of what the issue is, is B's going to all those things and is spending way more than what we originally agreed on. B didn't agree on that, but the other four of us agreed it was going to be limited X dollars per person. And then we would look at what the budgets are, knowing that we're a little teeny, teeny city on what we're spending on doing these things and going places and what the value is to a city that is, really, we don't have cops, we don't have, there's a long list of what we don't have. So we're a very limited piece of what that looks like. So that's kind of how we got here.
So are you deciding, I mean, before you vote, I just wanted to find out, are you deciding whether the rest of you are going to give you, give her your money so she'll have the $5,000 to finish up going to them?
We don't totally know what we're about to do. I mean, there's no, it's not super clear. It could be any of the above.
Well, that's why I wanted to ask some questions before you decide something, then we can't go back and ask about it. So is this the time to ask about it?
Correct, yes. So this is, this is the time for general public comment on this topic.
You have a question, ask the question.
Right, so it's possible that you guys can all decide, like Patrick's not going to go, and Leah's not going to go to anything, so she can have the rest of money and she, but her limit would be a total of $5,000. And right now, there's $3,000 left.
It, it, it could be that, it could be we decide to spend the money instead of maintaining the roads, we decide to give it to B to travel. It could be any, from that extreme to not. It could be anything.
Okay. Well, it seems like what she does is valuable, that somebody goes and represents us even as small a city as we are. But, for example, you know, I talked to Malibu after the Woolsey fire, but B got information I couldn't get because of her relationship that was over and above what mine was. You know, I just walked in cold turkey. So, so she brings back stuff. Besides what she takes there from us, she also brings back stuff. So anyway, so I think there's definitely some value in her going to these, you know, if you have to cut back on one of the, whatever, to, but at least she gets that amount or, I mean, that's why I'm asking, are you going to decide to be like, okay, you can go to these three, but not these five, or you only have this amount of money, that's what you got to decide? Okay. Okay. Well, anyway, I think there's some value to having us represented even as small as we are. Otherwise, we get forgotten, so. And it brings back stuff from the bigger cities. I mean, look, now we're going to learn from Palisades and Pasadena what's going on, so.
Not to do.
Yeah, well, not to do. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Hi, I'm Sandy Sherman at 33 Crest Road East. And first of all, I trust each one of you to use your discretion, and that's why you are doing this and serving our community. And I trust B, you know, totally, that whatever she thinks is really important for us to come back and share. Even if it's one thing that makes a difference, it's, it's invaluable and it's priceless. So thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you.
Got two more to receive and file.
Two more letters?
Yeah. Can we make a motion?
I, I, I don't care. I would donate my...
I'm sorry, for these two pieces of paper that are coming.
I make the motion, receive and file the two more letters.
Second.
All paper?
Bye.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to close the public comment. All right, what do you guys want to do?
I would donate my $1,000 to B.
And, and I would...
Hold on, hold on, don't, don't, don't keep selling, okay?
[laughter]
Okay.
Well, I'm not donating my $1,000, at least at this time. I, you know, the, the question about the value of these conferences, I've been to several, and I will say that I've walked away with what I thought was valued. I've also walked away with, what a waste of time, and it's really hard to judge. You can look at the agenda on these things and sort of determine if there's going to be any, you know, reportable value to the city. On the other hand, sometimes it's just the, being present and find yourself in situations that it was good to have been there, you, you meet somebody new, or you have an opportunity to, to, to share information, or, excuse me, to receive information. I remember, it's been a few years now, but I remember talking to the mayor of Paradise right after their, their disaster there, and that was at the time when we were considering sirens ourselves, so that was helpful. I don't know, it's, it's a little hard for me to not predict, but I guess, determine how much value all these different organizations or conferences bring to our city. So I'm not saying that I wouldn't attend because I have, and sometimes I find value, sometimes I don't.
That's a structured fire.
Rolling Hills Estates.
Rolling Hills Estates on 7 Sunnyfield.
Sunnyfield.
Look at me here. I got a new app.
Yeah. He does. He's telling me about it.
So...
We all appreciate B's dedication, what she's done over the years. She's been very involved with some committees, things like the COG, that every year, this body even discusses whether or not that body has any value to us and whether we're going to remain in that body. So there's issues here that are, this isn't all what it appears to be. It appears to me that it's being presented as if we don't attend these things, that we are not involved. Some of us, I'm like Pat, I've gone to some of these things and some of them I've not gone to. We don't necessarily know which things we may choose to want to attend until we actually see the agenda for, for the conferences. I don't know if any of you have ever been to conferences for your professional things that you've been to. Some may be good, some may be, some may not. As Pat says, sometimes you can tell from the agenda, sometimes you can't. The ones I don't go to, I don't not, I know this is a double negative, I, I don't disattend them or don't not go to them because I'm not interested, or because I think we're an island and we don't need to care about what's going on around us. It's that when you look at the agenda and the things they're talking about are not really pertinent to what we are doing. There are many, many other options that we have, other venues that we as council people have, we can, to make contacts with other public electeds, staffs, and so forth, that don't necessarily cost as much money. Annual conferences, going to Sacramento, I went to Sacramento once when we were fighting the housing, when we were trying to make it so that we did not have, we were trying to stop them taking over local control and our RENA numbers and things like that. It was absolutely the biggest waste of time I'd ever been to. You think you're going to get an opportunity to talk to your elected officials, and believe me, it doesn't go like you think it's going to go. I don't know, in order for me to say I would, I would give B all of my, my share until I see the agendas, I don't know whether I want to go or not. And I, uh, excuse, excuse me, we, we, we listen, I, I would like the opportunity to say why, and people can disagree with me, that's just fine, but this is not about whether B has done a fantastic job since she's been on council. She has, she wouldn't still be here if she hadn't done a fantastic job. This is a different, this is a different issue, and I almost, there, there are other, like Pat mentioned meeting, somebody, the guy from Paradise. When I was working on the sirens, I didn't know these people, I hadn't met them at things, but I got on the phone and I called them and said, you know, hey, I'm, you know, blah de blah from Rolling Hills. And you can still make connections that to Judith's comment, that B had information that she had that Judith wasn't able to get. Well, sometimes you don't have to have been going to these conferences, especially the annual conferences, where if you look at those agendas and they're talking about the times being spent thanking the people that left and the new people that are going to be elected to come in and things like that, it's, it's a question of trying to prioritize what you go, which, what you go to. No one's trying to keep B from going to things. We have a set amount of money, we're trying to stay within the budget. If it was towards the end of the year and I had a chance to see whichever things I choose not to go to, I would be, we have in the past, been delighted to give the money to anybody else that wants to go to. I'm not trying to hold on to something and then let it not be used. That's not, that isn't the point. But I think that we've tried to work this issue together. I can't believe how it keeps coming back. You would think it would be such a simple thing, and we are making this big, huge deal... You would think it would be such a simple thing, and we are making this big, huge deal out of it, instead of saying that this is what it, this is what it is, and I don't, I think that when it's presented the way it was, I almost resent the fact that it makes us look like we are not, A, trying to work with you, or B, because, not BB, that letter B, B, that those of us that don't attend some of these things, don't attend because we don't care, or we're not involved. That's totally incorrect. We are involved and we do care, or we wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be doing this. It's just that when you look at some of these things and you go to them, and you find what the use is, it isn't necessarily advantageous to what helps us. So, that's all.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Are you going to say something? I wanted to say something.
Well, I know, but can we say something different?
Yes.
No, don't just, okay, go ahead.
All right, so I just want to indicate, which hasn't been mentioned before, I know the council knows this, but we had a $10,000 budget when Jeff and I started in 2013, and I don't know how long it was, maybe Jim knows, before that, but it was only switched, what, two or three years ago at the most, where it was reduced at $5,000. But I remember at that time, I said, look, the conferences I'm going to are basically at $5,000. We really need to keep this $10,000 amount because they're just going up higher because the hotels charge more for these events. There's a lot more that goes on at the conferences besides what's on the agenda. I mean, I have personal relationships with each of the board of supervisors because of the work that I've done, which is very helpful. If we need their help, I can go to them. I have Lindsey Horvath's cell phone, and Janice Hahn, which I know Pat does too, and cell phone for Barger's chief of staff, and in context with the other two supervisors. But, I'm just saying that this is, these connections and be able to maintain these connections are important, so when we need something, I can go to another city, I can go to supervisor, I can go to whoever and get information and assistance. And I think that's, that's the important thing, is we don't know when we're going to need this, and that's really something we have to have, and I'm able to see things that could be legally problematic, so that's why I think it's important to know what's coming down the pike.
Could I just ask you, you've mentioned, you know, the board of supervisors and this and the that. Those connections that you make at that don't necessarily require going away to conferences to make those connections. They can be local things. All I'm saying is that $10,000 that we had before, we've heard over and over again, yes, it used to be $10,000, we cut it, you would like it to be more than $10,000, we took some across-the-board cuts on everything in the budget that year, everything except things like fire, and, you know, we prioritized, and we cut some of these discretionary spending items. That was the vote of the council, that's what we did, and I know you didn't agree with that. But that, that was the fact of life. That was what we decided, that was what the majority agreed to do. No one has said not to go to meetings, you know, you did a wonderful job when you were, you know, with the league and your presidency, you know, for our area. You've done a wonderful job, B. It isn't about that. I'd like to see us get past your thinking that that's what it is, that we're trying to keep you from doing that wonderful job. We're not. Just saying, I'm just saying that, I'm saying, I'm just so tired of talking about this.
Hold on. So, this, I know I'm not supposed to start these things, but I'm going to start these things, is one, I agree with you, you are correct, but I've been, I give up, okay? That's where I'm at right now. I make a motion, we, that we, because I already gave my thousand, Jim already gave a thousand, and B's thousand, that's three, I make a motion, we extend the budget for $2,000 more so B can do these things that are on her list, and you still have your thousand, you still have your thousand, and I surrender.
I would second that.
B, we vote. You want me to call the roll? Yes, please. Because it's going to be-
Can I take one more comment?
Yep.
I purposely don't go to these meetings. It's not an accident, it's intentional, and it's because I did go for a lot. And the vast majority of the time that I went to meetings, they were talking about how to raise fees on your residents because you don't call it a tax. So, how you can increase taxes on your residents and call it a fee, and how you can get around the laws about raising taxes. So, I didn't think our residents would want me to go to meetings to come to learn how to sneakily increase your taxes. And I purposely don't go, and that's because that's a huge part of it, is how the cities can stick it to their residents, and it's kind of unbelievable. So, anyway.
Okay. We're going to vote? Okay. Councilmember Mersch.
For giving her-
No, $2,000 more in the budget, so she'll have $5,000 for this year.
Extend the budget.
Yes.
By $2,000.
By $2,000, that would be to a total of $7,000.
Yes.
Correct.
Oh, no, 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 wait, that wouldn't make it $7,000. I thought you meant you were going to give her-
No, no, so I gave her my thousand, she has a thousand, Jim already gave a thousand, there's three, she needs two more, so we're going to make the budget $2,000 more, so you still have your thousand, and he still has his thousand for a total of seven.
Correct, so the total budget would be a total of $7,000.
I misunderstood.
We would return with a budget amendment at the next meeting.
You're just giving her your-
Can you start again? Mr. Senator.
Calling the roll again, Councilmember Mersch.
Yes.
Councilmember Black, Mayor Proton Derringer, and Mayor Piper.
Okay. Moving on. Okay. No, it's coming back.
Going back to 13A.
Said she appreciated.
I know, I know, I know, that's okay.
All right.
13A, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're going to 13A, fiscal, proposed fiscal year budget calendar. Just give up.
Good evening again, mayor and council members.
Weekend, curious conversations.
As always. As always, the first meeting of the year, we bring before you your proposed fiscal year budget calendar. I know I tried to contact members of the Finance Budget Audit Commission a bit early just to get your feedback on this. This has gone through both staff and Robert Samario, so really tonight it's for you to take a look over and approve and/or make any potential changes, so that way we can have that set in stone and be able to go about the next five, six months in budget preparations for the fiscal year '25, '26. With that said, I'm available for any questions. This is at your discretion.
So, the council meetings that are checked here are our normal council meetings, correct?
Correct.
Those aren't any surprise ones. So, the two meetings that have been added is the March 10th and the May 5th, which are for the Finance Committee and Budget Committee.
Correct.
And as far as we know, Jim's going to say the words, it's so far from now, how mu-
I do know.
Oh.
I will not be here May the 5th.
Okay, so March 10th.
Ha, that would be a surprise.
Yes.
By surprise?
So, what-
Week before and the week after.
Wanted to ask staff, was any consideration given to having, like we've had in the past, a budget session at the beginning before the Finance Committee starts doing some of the nitty-gritty work on it, just to get ideas of what the priorities are for each council member, like we used to have in the past, I think it was even in January, it's early January?
Well, we, my first year here, we did a strategic planning session, which is a little bit different, so that would be another conversation that you could have and talk about with the city manager about. I won't opine on, you know, the value of that at this time.
So, but how about this, is on the February 24th meeting, we're going to go through the budget, and then at that time, a very short list of what you think is important to you, if it's not what our normal stuff is, because we have very limited money by the time we pay the stormwater lady and all these other crazy things, we have nothing left. All right, so, okay, so the March 10th, we're good, and then when we get, you want to pick something for May now, Jim?
Yes, and I would just recommend-
Can we do it before the-
If we can do it somewhere ahead of the May 12th meeting, because that's typically where we'll bring those recommendations to the council as part of your budget workshop. And/or, we could always do a special meeting later in May, especially because, we'll get to this on your next item, your second meeting in May falls on Memorial Day, so if we needed to have a special meeting to be able to do the budget workshop, then it would be good to have that discussion as part of this and the next item as well.
Nope.
I like extra meetings.
Yeah, I know. Jim, can, how about your April 28th?
Yep.
Right before, so we can do that before the meeting? So, it's on the same day as our city council meeting earlier?
I'll be here.
Great. Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, we, I'd like to open the public comment, is there any public comment? Seeing there's no public comment, I close the public comment. Is there a motion to receive and file?
I would say a motion to accept the budget calendar with the recommendations as made by the body.
I would move the calendar with the recommendations.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Christian, can you stick it in your calendar? Did you add mine?
So, after tonight, I'm going to do calendar invites for everybody.
I'm super excited.
On everything, yes.
Binders.
Okay, so now we're moving on to requests for approval per city, for the council direction for future '24, '25 potential conferences. Wait a minute, we just did that one, I'm moving on, just trying to-
13B is your council meeting.
Moving on to 15B.
No.
13B.
13B.
The meeting dates for calendar year 2025, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Approve city council meeting dates for the calendar year 2025.
Okay. Good evening again, mayor and council members. Within your packet are the proposed city council meeting dates and city holidays for the year. You meet on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. As you'll see, the only conflict right now this year is Memorial Day on May 26th, so per my comments in the last item, if there was a desire to have another meeting in May, we, now would be the time to discuss that. Per Councilmember Mersch's last year, you'll see that we have already selected a potential date for the Holiday Open House, which falls on the first Monday in December. So, again, any feedback on that at this point would be welcome as well. I leave it in your able-bodied hands.
Didn't we need another meeting on Memorial Day? Did we? Yes, we did. We did? Okay. And we do need it, we don't, if-
We can-
We can always cancel it if we don't need it, but nobody wants to come if we don't have anything to discuss, and I'm sure that staff will, and the mayor, when they're doing the agendas, will work around that. If we were to set one up and we had some items that could be pushed, we could get rid of it, but it's much easier to do it now and get it on the books and plan for it than to try and get a quorum when we need one and to have to put off talking about some items. More and more of the items that are coming to us have shorter and shorter timeframes on them, and we need to have as many of us here as possible, I think, to work on it.
Okay, what days can Pat come? You, Pat.
I serve at the pleasure of the city council. I will be here. No, of course, I mean, so as long as, but I mean, BB and Kay, we have plenty of attorneys, I can assure you that-
We want, what days can you come?
Yeah.
Can you come on Tuesdays?
So, I can, so Tuesdays, I'm typically booked the second and fourth Tuesdays, however, they, the city of Hermosa Beach to your north has not adopted their calendar yet, so I, you know, for all I know, they will have a dark meeting as well, and so, but typically the second and fourth Tuesdays are when I am preoccupied.
How do you look on Wednesdays?
I'm wide open on Wednesdays.
Not anymore.
Not Wednesday, no.
Okay, so- 28th? 28th.
I'm seeing a slip-armed immunity.
You don't have a standard?
They might replace me.
Oh, no.
Monday, this-
Yeah, and Mondays, Mondays, I'm wide open as well.
Well, so your choice is, you either go, we'll have a meeting on the 12th, and then a meeting on the 19th, so back to back. Or, we do it on the 28th or the 29th of Thursday, which then is making it shorter on the other end. Does anyone have a problem with 29th of Thursday?
At this point, I don't know of anything.
Monday's my day.
So, our only choice is, don't, I don't mean this in the way, our choice is Monday.
Or, I can be excused.
Well, if you're, if you're cool not coming, then we should probably do it on the 28th. All right, stick it up. Does anyone have a problem with the 28th, except for Pat? That Pat? So, let's stick it on the 28th, and then we'll-
And then we'll evaluate if it's necessary at that time.
Okay.
And then, with that said, just checking with the city attorney, did you say the December Tuesday is dark in Hermosa?
It was this previous year, and so I don't believe that there'll be any change to that, but as I said before, someone will be here, confident, ready to go, ready to roll.
It would be, does the council want to keep it at December 9th, which is a Tuesday, or move it to Wednesday, December 10th?
Are you kidding me?
In case we need a meeting.
December?
We'll have no idea, I'm not charted that far.
Okay.
The 9th.
Hey, let's just stick it on the 9th right now, and then we'll deal with it, and we'll move it if we have to.
Yeah.
Okay, so December 8th and December 9th?
8th for the open house.
8th for the open house, and the 9th would be a meeting if necessary.
So, just need you to, motion to approve with your changes.
Public comment?
Oh, and you do need public comment. Open to public comment, is there any public comment? No public comment, I'm closing the public comment, and then I'm going to make a motion that we accept the calendar as presented with the change of May 28th for the Memorial Day meeting, and we add December 9th for the meeting in December if we need it. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, consideration of the approved and updated city council committee assignments.
Members of the city council, I worked alongside with the mayor, and I have spoken to a few council members in regards to official committee boards, making some adjustments for committee liaisons to certain groups, city council committees, and the ad hoc subcommittees with the inclusion of a new committee of the PVP Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan ad hoc. This is what Councilwoman Mersch has been speaking about, it's a new ad hoc put together by the Peninsula Cities to discuss hazard mitigation plans. At this time, mayor, the information that's before you are based on conversations that I have with the council. However, at this time, if there is a council member that has decided after speaking with me that maybe I don't necessarily want to be on that group or in that committee, this is the right time to make those changes. I know they're listed here, if you want to take a moment, feel free to take this time to either request a change after sitting on in a mole-. time to either request a change after sitting on an opening on it, or any other removals from committees or boards.
Well, not, you're only talking about removals.
Yeah, in other words, if you wanna remove yourself from, from a committee, and/or say, I actually am interested in this committee after thinking about it some more, so...
Well, I would have something to say, but not about a removal, but just about...
All right, so any comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Just wanted to speak, because the, normally what we've done, and I think most cities do, is when we have a mayor's committee, and then the city selection committee, the mayor is supposed to sit on that, it's a mayor's committee, and the city selection committee is for the mayor, and then the alternate would be the mayor pro temp, because there's, if there's issues, that would go.
This, I'm sorry, this is the Los Angeles County City Selection Committee?
Yeah, it's normally for the, the mayor of the city.
You can have it be...
So, so, all right, but Pat, you're the delegate right now, do you care? Do you go to that thing?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, thank you.
And, and then, well, all I'm saying is that I know sometimes that there are people that, that are going for positions, and I end up knowing them, not to say that I can't share that with somebody else, but that's, a lot of times, you go there and you end up sitting there because they don't have a quorum, but, for the city selection. But for the mayor's committee, I think it makes sense, if there's some time that the mayor's not available, if there's continuing discussions with the other mayor, that the mayor pro temp be the alternate for the mayor's committee for continuity, so when the mayor pro temp becomes mayor...
Okay, so, this I'm thinking here, is we're gonna switch the, you'd okay not being the alternate for the Los Angeles city...
You're asking me?
Yes.
I don't care.
Okay, so why don't we make B the alternate there? I'm gonna go to the lunch with the mayors, because I can make most of those, and then, and then, I think B should be the alternate on that, Pat, because if she's gonna be mayor after me, then she should start doing the things. Okay? And you wanna do the, you wanna do the...
City floor.
No, no, the, yeah, so you're still gonna do that one.
It's the alternate for the mayor's committee.
And then, but the sanitation thing, you still like doing that, right?
I love it.
Okay.
What's not to love about sanitation?
Okay, so, are you good with those?
Public comment?
Yeah, I'm good there. You got those two changes?
I have Mayor Pro Tem Derringer coming in as the alternate for the Peninsula City Mayor's Committee with Mayor Piper as the delegate. I have for the Los Angeles County City Selection Committee, Mayor Pro Tem Derringer as the alternate, while Councilmember Wilson remains as the delegate.
Okay, perfect. Open to public comment, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'm gonna close the public comment. Someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept as, as modified.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are you gonna send the bios to staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, we're to fifteen B. Receive and file a presentation on the use of diesel generators within the city limits and the best practices. And is, is, okay, go ahead.
Mayor Piper and members of city council, the item before you will be presented to you by Ms. Samantha Crew, management analyst, Annie Richardson, various coordinator, and I will go and pass it on now.
Good evening, Mayor Piper and city council, would you prefer the abbreviated version of this report for time's sake?
Do you want the abbreviated?
Yes, please.
Okay. Due to the utility shut-off in parts of the city, residents look to find alternative power sources to continue residing in their homes. Generators have become common and a critical need. So recently, staff became aware of concerns regarding noise levels due to generators, and there are no current city ordinances that apply to this concern. Staff looked at neighboring jurisdictions and found limited circumstances that were comparable, although not the same, cities that experience a lot of public safety power shut-offs in fire-prone areas have a similar use for generators. Several cities, several cities adjusted or clarified their noise ordinance to address the growing dependency on backup generators. Our neighboring city, Rancho Palisverdes, given their similar situation, have not regulated their hours of generator use due to the critical nature of the need. Staff spoke with residents in the Portuguese Bend neighborhood, and was told that there is community understanding that generator use should be used from seven AM to ten PM. It is not an official rule, but, the World, the World Health Organization defines noise above sixty-five decibels as noise pollution. The sound emissions from a standard twenty-two kilowatt generator is approximately sixty-seven decibels. However, this can vary depending on noise amplification factors and also sound deflectors. A few approaches the city council could take on this matter would be to maintain the status quo, adopt a traditional noise ordinance, or establish timeframes for mechanical equipment. And based on this evening's discussion, staff will provide additional information for city council's review and consideration at a next meeting.
Any questions?
I have a question, which is a comment on the subject line, you have the use of diesel generators, I don't think this should be limited to diesel, there's certain combustion like gasoline and propane, so it should, it should be limited along with diesel. This is my question.
Okay.
And I had a question, how many complaints, in terms of numbers, have we received from, at the city regarding the noise of generators?
From my awareness, we've had one complaint.
One complaint, okay.
That doesn't mean we're not hearing it as council members, as I'm sure you're probably, you should be hearing them as well.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking for staff, you know, that, and then maybe we could find out from council members, how many.
So, I have questions also, because I wanted to know how many diesel, but then it turns out they're all noisy, they, I can't hear any of them down in my ditch. So, how many diesel are there? Do we know how many people are using diesel generators? No idea.
You've probably got about forty of them, because that's how many people don't have power.
Well, some have solar, right? I was told some...
You need a generator to store your, when your batteries don't have stuff, you need a generator to...
So they're doing generators, not raw battery?
Yes. Well, Pat, you, you...
Yeah, I'd be happy to share. This, this may be beyond, maybe the discussion part, though? I'm not a question.
Well, why don't we just... Start the discussion, then we'll open it up after.
So, most people who've lost their power, I have now a different source of power, typically a combination of solar and battery, but I'm not aware of anybody that has own solar and battery that doesn't have a generator for backup, because the cloudy days, certainly, we haven't any rainy days lately, but the cloudy days really compare to the amount of solar electric production. Even the smoke from the fires for last week has diminished the productivity of the panels. So, almost everybody, at least everybody that I know, has a generator, even if they do have the solar and battery systems.
And they happen to use them frequently, it sounds like.
It really, it's, it's a very, well, I can tell you the range is hardly ever to constant.
Really?
Yeah, that's, that's the issue.
Because some of the systems, they didn't, there's lots, lots of reasons...
They're under, under...
They're under designed, they're, they're under designed, they don't either have, have either enough panels to collect, or they don't have enough that, they don't have enough of the batteries to store.
That's a justice.
And so...
For my driveway.
Yours?
Not my generator.
Somebody else's. Wow, and are, is it expensive? Does it kick out a bunch of nasty little smoke and stuff, too?
Uh, again, varies, you know...
But diesel, I would think would.
You know what, the diesel are among the cleanest.
Really?
Yeah, because they have, they have emission control systems, just like a new diesel vehicle, you know?
Doesn't smell like...
No, not at all, hardly at all.
Right, right.
But if you take a little camp generator, a four thousand kilowatt, a four thousand watt camp generator, you've been in mobile home parks, somewhere where, it's just, you know, a chorus of these loud vibrating and emission belching machines.
Wow.
So, my neighbors both have propane, the ones that I can hear when they kick on are propane. I have not noticed, you asked about smell, I've not noticed any smell, but it's, it's really, really loud.
It's loud, and the tanks are all above ground, then?
Hmm?
And the tanks are all above ground?
The propane tanks.
And then, so, diesel and gasoline, people have to have big tanks of that stuff around, too?
Well, for example, the generator I have is built into the, it's just a box, a box with a built-in fuel tank, so it's not a separate source of fuel. This, there's, I almost wanna have public comment first.
I know, I was waiting for you guys to breathe.
I just don't know the details.
And I'd be happy to share those.
Yeah.
Hey, we're gonna talk, we're gonna open public comment?
My public comment is that I silly thought that this was not about the sound as much as it was about the safety, and given the fires, I thought maybe you were discussing the propane tanks as they relate to the fires, which is a scary thought, so, that's not what you're discussing, but I hope that you'll continue to think about the increased danger of the gigantic sitting bombs there. But I will say, I have bad hearing, that it is common knowledge that people think that it's very loud down there, and my husband, who has good hearing, and other people on Southfield with good hearing, can actually hear the generators up on Southfield, so I can't, because I don't hear well. But I know they're, they go on past ten o'clock, because my husband puts a pillow over his ears in our bedroom on Southfield, because he can hear them, so they're loud enough for people who can hear well, which is not me, so I'm fine, I'm just worried about them exploding.
Yeah, Alfred Visco, fifteenth century. Well, we were one of the lucky ones that had not only our electricity cut off, but our natural gas. So the sequencing went like this. Okay, no electricity, I'll get, I'll borrow my son's portable generator, and we'll deal with that, which meant I couldn't run a large part of my house, I could only run a few items. Eventually, we got the portable generator set up so that we could actually feed correctly into the house, so that increased our ability to utilize even more of our house's electrical components. Obviously, that was not ideal, so eventually, we got a five-hundred gallon propane tank above ground. It has, it will also not only supply the fuel for electricity to our twenty-four kilowatt generac, generator, but it also supplies heating for our house. I had to convert all of our furnaces over to burn propane, which in itself was an interesting We have solar panels, have had them for ten years, but once electricity was cut off, they became useless, because there, there's an anti-eyeling effect, even though there was no, they weren't working on the power lines, they automatically just died. So I had to go out now and buy solar panels. We've gone, that was, been a long-term process. We have all the hardware there for three Powerwall threes, of thirteen KW apiece. Our solar panels are sixteen KW, so the capacity is like forty-eight, and the batteries were sixteen. Once, we've gone through the whole process of getting them approved, which took forever, and now our vendor is trying to figure out how to make them work. So we've been on the generator ever since we put in the propane tank and the big generator since, I guess, September, October, probably got it in by end of September. We run it, when I wake up in the morning, I go out and I turn it on, when I go to sleep at night, I turn it off. And the reason I have to continue to run it longer is because I have to have enough energy, not only to run the house while we're awake, but to feed the small batteries I have placed on my refrigerator, my refrigerator freezer complex in my kitchen, can't run my freezer downstairs, can't run my refrigerator downstairs in the cellar, but I've got a small battery hooked up, so that, once we turn off, that battery will last the night, so my freezer and my refrigerator don't defrost overnight. Back, back in the morning, we hook the thing up, we go again, it generates enough, oh, also to charge my hearing aids while I'm asleep, and so, back in the morning, we put it back again, it feeds the generator, as well as the house, it's feeding the generator, bringing it up to a hundred percent capacity, so we have that to be able to run. That's where we're at. I deliberately, I had a choice in how I placed my generator. I could have placed it so that the exhaust and all the noise went away from my house towards, if you know how my house is situated, towards a, a small hill, and which would have reduced the amount of noise and pollution that we receive, but I didn't do that. I instead directed it so that it went towards the back part of our house, which is not occupied, and so, we can't really hear the generator in the part of the houses that we're occupying, because it's going away from us, and of course, the pollution's going that way, too. So, I looked into quickly, to see if there's anything, any type of muffler I could put on this thing, I couldn't find anything, but I don't even know if there, such a thing exists for a generac, I kinda doubt it. I haven't really, I just looked quickly. So that's our situation, every now and then, my very nice neighbor, who's trying, who doesn't live here, he's, he's writing it out to tenants, he comes over every now and then, and we have this long conversation, and he always ends his conversation, "When are you gonna get your batteries going?" I say, "Twelve to never." That's, that's a vendor, that's a vendor issue, okay? So they're supposed to come out this week sometime to get, get my batteries to work, we'll see what happens. So it's running between thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a month in propane cost, where before, I had zero electric cost because of my panels, and whatever natural gas that I would burn during a year, which was pretty minimal. So that's where I'm at, so I'm hemorrhaging money, I'm pissed as hell, and I can't wait to sue somebody. Okay? And as soon as I can find an attorney that's willing to take it on a contingency fee, that's exactly what's gonna happen. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna do it, I'm eighty, I'll be eighty years old, I have no staff, I'm not gonna get into that type of litigation against every big giant law firm in the world that, that I'm gonna go against, but we're talking, and we'll see how it goes. Trust me, I only run that generator when I have to. Okay? I am not running it excessively, because it's costing me a bundle of, of money to do so. I have no desire to run that thing twenty-four hours a day, I have no desire to run it sixteen hours a day. I'm doing what I can to minimize that usage, okay? Soon as my power, soon as my power walls get up and operating, hopefully, the generator will be only used as a backup, as Pat points out, it doesn't matter how many batteries I put in. When it's raining out there, those things aren't gonna be generating anything, so I'm gonna be relying totally on the back, the generac, the twenty-four KW generac. Cloudy days, sooty days, we get a tremendous marine layer down there, in our little area, a little microclimate, our marine layer acts, shoots in May, and, and ends, goes all the way, sometimes into July and August, so that's gonna affect the efficiency of the batteries to store energy. So I don't, you know, I don't really know how often the backup generator's gonna be used, once the power walls are up and running. You can't pull the power walls all the way down to zero, because if you do that, you can't start up again. So all these batteries have a reserve, and some of them, they'll tell you they have to have like a fifty percent reserve, they'll take it down to fifty percent, then you're supposed to be using some... So, so all these batteries have a reserve, and some of them, they'll tell you they have to have like a fifty percent reserve. They'll take it down to fifty percent, then you're supposed to be using some other source of electricity, so it builds it back up to ninety percent. You can juggle that a little bit, you can probably bring it down to maybe twenty percent. But, anything below that, you're taking the real risk of your battery going completely dead, and then you're, you're, you're done. There's, there's no way to recharge it. So, it, it's a, it's going to be a, a, and the other bad thing about, the bad thing about the power walls is you cannot use your Generac to top off the power walls. So, your Generac, your, your generator has to be sized to do the whole house, because it's gonna kick on and run the whole house, okay? So, it has to be sized that way. Because power wall, Tesla will not allow you to use, quote, "The dirty energy from your generator to top off the batteries." That would be a much better design, but they're not willing to do that yet. They haven't figured out how to do it. So, that's another issue. So, even if I had waited, put the power walls in, and then sized my generator, I still would have ended up with the same sized generator. Okay? Many, many years ago, I looked into a generator to back up the house, just in case, and they were quoting me even bigger generator. How I'm getting away with twenty-four is probably because I'm not utilizing the whole house. And that's the only way, you know, I'm not, pull pumps aren't running, that's another issue. But, you know, so, all my potential energy uses have been decreased because of the issue of the land movement. Um, I don't know what you can do about this. Uh, you're, you're going to have to live with the noise. I'm sorry, I appreciate it, but you're gonna have to live with it. Um, because I'm gonna run my generators. And if you try to come in and stop me, there's gonna be one hell of a lawsuit. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other public comment? Close the public comment? So, here's a couple things is, in the way, um, there's two different layers here is. One is, the people who are affected right now with the power outage and the gas outage, because there's also, like, in our neighborhood, we all have generators too, but they're only there to run when the power's actually out. And it sounds like a fleet of lawn mowers, is what it sounds like in my backyard when ours kicks on. And I can tell you when the power goes out, because the guy right across the canyon has, between me and your dad, has a big one, diesel, and it kicks on. And I can hear it when the window's closed. So, I think there's things is, what happens when it's a, I don't wanna say an emergency situation, because honestly, I'm gonna run mine the whole time. Because I don't have, I have solar, I don't have the, I don't have the battery walls, I don't have those sort of things, so, I don't know what happens at some length of time. It sounds like what Fred's coming up with is going to solve his problem, hopefully, to minimize the amount of that's running, but I don't know what that means for everybody else in the neighborhood. And my guess is Fred's further ahead of a lot of other people. So, do we have any idea if some of the neighbors are, "This is what I got, and this is all I'm gonna do"? Or, are people like, "This is how far I've gotten so far"? Do we have any way to tell?
So, can I, uh,
Yeah.
I have a lot to share on this, and I'll try not to drag this out too long. But, Fred brings up, uh, an interesting position, and what, what I got out of that was, every home that lost power and gas is unique in how they
Tackled it.
solved the situation. And some solved it in a permanent or semi-permanent way, some are still in transition. I would say he's still in transition, based on what he just shared. One thing that concerns me a little bit is, you mentioned the Tesla Powerwall. Um, I was certainly, um, advised not to get that, and many other people, uh, got the same advice, because the Tesla Powerwall does not operate effectively without being backed into the grid. So, that's, just, just throw that out there, it doesn't affect me, but I heard a comment, and I couldn't let that go, uh, without my comment in return. But, again, most, certainly, all the people that I know and in contact with have solved this problem pretty resiliently with solar panels and batteries and propane. In, in different combinations, some have more panels, some have more batteries, there's, you know, each home is unique. I have the, I'm in a fortunate position of having two homes that I had to repower. And I'm not the only one, there's at least three of us in the flying triangle that had to repower two homes each. Uh, so, you can imagine, you know, what was, what that was like for the, you know, for the residents. I, I, I would look at this from four angles, as far as, um, if we're gonna move forward with, um, regulating generators. And Fred brought up many of the situations that I'm gonna address right here. One, and I'm just gonna throw these out, because these are up for consideration. But, one item to consider, if we're gonna take action, is, are we gonna limit the hours, excuse me, of operation? He mentioned that he's, he's, you know, basically, uh, gone to dusk. Um, some people are of the same mind, but I'll get to that in a second. Another one is, you know, this is kind of what, what you, uh, discussed, was the, the length of operational time. You said you're gonna leave your generator on until the power's restored. Um, normally, that's a few hours. It has happened where it goes more than a day. Um, you know, that's, that's kind of a excessively long time, but it does happen. Another item to consider is the decibel limit, and this is, you can get these, the decibel limits off these different generators off of spec sheets. I happen to have a generator that is classified as, I think, as extremely low decibel or low, low volume, something like that. But, and it's, these are objective measurements. My generator runs at fifty-eight decibels at twenty-three feet. Because whenever you put a decibel, uh, associated decibel with noise, it's always, you know, is it across the room, or is it across the street? And of course, time dissipates over distance, so, you know, just saying, just throwing out a number, a raw number by itself really doesn't help if it's, you know, three feet on the other side of your driveway. Uh, so, again, fifty-eight decibels, and you can, you can look this up. I don't, uh, I didn't share this with the staff earlier to, to come up with this, this kind of, uh, measurement. But, uh, my generator is, is, it's a diesel compared to, like I said, the, the, the low, uh, kilowatt producing, uh, typically four thousand watt camping generators. That's, that's basically what they're, what they are, and they're at much higher decibels. And then, another thing to consider is, are we interested in addressing a generator as the primary source of power for some home? And if, if that is the case, then you could expect it to run twenty-four seven. Some people don't, that have it for their primary source, and again, back to Fred's comments. There is at least one generator, uh, in my neighborhood that runs roughly twenty hours a day, certainly goes on past midnight. Um, what time it starts in the morning, I don't know. I have to say that, uh, this time of year, it's, um, easier for myself, but really the residents. The, the whole reason that I wanted to bring this up is because most of the residents have kind of been, so what can you do, what can you do? So, I'll bring it up. Um, they, um, they had issues with the noise, the hours of operation. And as I said, if we wanted to consider whether a generator should be allowed to be the primary source of power for a home, then that's gonna impact the hours of operation. So, those are the four, uh, those are the four areas that I personally think we need to be looking at, not addressing. And I know we're not gonna solve at this meeting, we're not gonna come up with rules out of the thing. Certainly not gonna make a motion about that, but, um, you know, you have roughly forty homes in the area that lost power, uh, four months ago. And most of us has, have dealt with the, the solution, and you hold a solution to the problem. Uh, if you haven't, uh, but the ones that have dealt with, that have figured out a, a, a solution, now are being impacted by the ones that haven't.
Okay, you have any comments?
Just Leah, yeah, I wanna hear what you have to say.
Um, Call me a dreamer, call me whatever, I've been telling all of my neighbors, I haven't given up on Edison yet. Whether people, I think someday we're gonna have power again, just like they were able to get power to, to my area. I, I believe the staff is working with them, that they are, right now, their eye may be off the ball just a moment. They do have some issues going on with the fires right now, but I believe that they are looking to find ways to get the grid back. People may choose or not choose to go on to the grid when they come back. They may hate Edison and don't wanna have anything to do with them. I think that's up to them. The, the people who've had our electricity cut off and the gas, this wasn't of their, their choosing. This is an emergency situation. Um, I'm gonna address just briefly the comment about the propane and the safety. None of us think that any kind of fuel out there, tanks are, are good. They're not safe, they're not, but people have to have electricity, they have to have power to live in their homes. I personally am not willing to tell people that they, you're, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to move out of, of your home. I, um, I would like to give this a, a little bit more time and some consideration. I think that I really feel that telling people who, it's great, people like Mr. Visco that are turning theirs off when they, you know, they run it in the evenings, and they, they're trying to be, um, conscientious and courteous and, and respectful. I, I think that's great, but not everybody's in that. I've seen some very under-designed or under, um, I don't know what word you wanna use, but
Underpowered.
I think you, underspec, underpowered systems that have, that caused the generators to have to be used more, um, and for longer periods of time. Um, I, I, I just, I'm not, I, like you say, I, I can't make a decision on this tonight, you're not asking us to. But, just from where I'm coming from, these people have no power in their homes if they don't have some system. And if we're gonna, that's a whole other issue about if you're gonna wanna try and decide, are we ever going to consider allowing a generator to be the sole power source? But, for right now, for what I'm hoping is going to be, you know, call me a Pollyanna, but I, I, I think Edison wants to provide service to us. If they didn't, I don't think they would have re-energized the homes that they've had. And, and they wouldn't be continuing to work with staff on plans that they are trying to do, to see what they can do for us. Then, if the grid comes back, and I'm not saying you give them a year before you make that kind of decision, but if, if the grid comes back and people choose not to go back on it, then that's up to them. But, while there's no grid there, whether it's electric or gas, I'm really not inclined to saying, I, I, I mean, I'm sorry. I don't like the sound of it, I don't think anybody does. It's not, it's not rolling hills, it's not why we moved here. But, I'm, I'm not in favor, I don't think it's a good idea to, I don't think it's being very sensitive to the needs of people that have no power without their generators to, to say, "You, you're, you're too noisy." Yeah, you are too noisy. The, the, this, but this wasn't a people's choice to have that. So, I'll be interested in other people's comments and what we can, would like to do going forward. But, I'd like to think that, you know, if we give some more time, um, and continue working with Edison and the gas company.
Okay, Jim?
No, I agree with Leah, and every time I hear about how horrible it is for these poor folks, and there's no way I'm gonna be involved in making it worse, no way. So, I would, if it comes to it, I would propose tabling it for six months and then reviewing to see if there's any progress with Edison.
You give me?
Um, I agree, um, I think it's horrible what they're going through, not having, um, gas, power, or both. Um, so, I guess what I wanna find out, I mean, the people who are making the complaints are the ones who are also on generators, is what I'm understanding, that, or maybe not, I don't know. But, what, what are you thinking in terms of, Pat, how, how would you fashion a solution?
Well, this is, first of all, I'm completely the opposite of Leah, as far as any, um, expectation Edison's gonna re-energize. They bailed on us, they're, you know, any comments that they have these days are just lip service to get our staff to hope that they're, they're gonna come back. I, I don't expect they, they ever will. If they did, I would be mad.
And I will say, Pat's a much better negotiator than I am, and he probably has a better feel for it than, than I do. I, I, I would, I, I will admit that, Pat.
So, to, to respond to your, your, uh, comment or question, you know, I think what we're talking about here is equity. And of course, all of us were impacted severely, you know, emotionally and financially. Uh, so, it was, it was a huge thing for us to deal with, and frankly, we were, we had no support. Yeah, we had a couple of titters here, you know, and there was a, an email string going along for a few weeks, a couple of months. You know, everybody sharing their, their problems and their solutions if, if they had them. Um, but, I gotta tell you, it's been pretty quiet for a long time, no pun intended, but, you know, it hasn't come before this council. I know we have met, and the whole thing is just really just dropped down. Um, nobody's complaining much, except to me and, and within the neighborhood. But, you know, I think the extreme, there, there's a couple of extremes. You know, outlaw generators, well, that's extreme, and I'm not, I'm not supporting or promoting that. The other extreme is, it doesn't matter what the noise level is, let it run twenty-four hours a day and blow everybody else out of their houses. And what I'm suggesting we discuss, and not wait six months, because, you know, right now, people are spending more time in their house. The sun goes down earlier, you get some break from the, uh, the monotonous noise. But, in a couple of months, it's gonna be spring, people wanna be on their decks or outside, you know, enjoying the, the rolling hills atmosphere, which is now punctuated with the different decibel levels and different frequencies of generators. But, what I'm suggesting is that we come up with some reasonable accommodation for those that have to run their generator. There, in my opinion, there has to be some limit to how long it can run and at what noise level. Just because, yeah, everybody's being impacted negatively, and the people that were in their generators certainly are. But, what about the people that live next door? Or down the street, or, you know, up the hill a quarter mile away? There, it, it doesn't seem fair to those that are being impacted that we can do nothing.
Okay, so, here's kind, I mean, here's kind of my take on this is, I, I agree with what you're saying. Part of me wants to understand is, where is everybody in the process? Because there's a big difference between, I'm just gonna use you here, 'cause you're here, Fred. Fred saying, "I'm done, this is how it's gonna be, this is the noise I'm making, and I'm finished", versus what Fred just said was, "I'm working on it, I'm, I'm close, I'm trying to get over the, what that's gonna be, and of course, I'm still gonna have the generator or not."
Again, this is the point of balance that I'm trying to
So, my, my, so, part of me wants to know, since there's only forty houses that we're talking about here is, that are using the generator slash, hopefully, battery slash solar as a combination to do what they're trying to do is, can we find out, ask, I don't know if we mail them a little survey that asks good questions? We include a stamp and they'll mail back, you know, with their address, call, whatever you wanna do? Let's talk to them, find out is, are you done? Where, what, what, what is your plan? Can we just discuss your plan and we kind of chart this thing out a little bit? Because if we're down to, 'cause we can say is, hey, our goal is to have quiet from ten PM till seven AM is our initial goal on this thing. Or something like that is what our initial goal is, and, uh, are you thinking you're gonna be able to achieve that initial goal? Because me, that's the first part, the nighttime part. Then, the next part is, you know, 'cause if this stays, Then the next part is, you know, 'cause if this stays, and I don't know what happens in a landslide, 'cause you bury propane tanks. I know they have pressure valves. I know they have safety measurements, but it's still a lot of fuel sitting in a small area. So if this is still here in five years from now and this is it, we might have to seriously talk about, what, and I don't know if it's really five years, could be one year, could be whatever, is the burying of propane tanks, of what that looks like. I know you can do things to make them quieter. You know, it's about airflow and et cetera around them. But there's things you can do to help really baffle the noise and send it in a different direction, whether you send it straight up or you send it someplace else. We can look at those things. So my problem is, I agree with you completely. If I was, I mean, that we gotta get it to something that's more normalized, whatever that means. But right now, I don't know how, if people are super close, I get it, you gotta put up with it for a little while. But if I'm Fred's neighbor and he's almost done and now, okay, it just feels like.
So I, I'm, I'm less worried about Fred and people in his situation, 'cause I don't know where everybody is. But when there is an A resident who, um, whose response to, "What are you doing?" Or when, "Are you going to do something?" The answer is, "Well, I'm a renter and the owner won't do anything." Okay, I guess that's forever then, that we're expected to.
So can we, so you obviously know some of this, but I think the right thing to do is, can we, can we talk to everybody? Let's, let's make a chart and figure out what are we really dealing with? 'Cause if it's one or two landlords that are, have renters and they're not willing to spend the money, I'm, I would be more aggressive about this thing that are, that are really our problems versus it's 90%, I'm making this up now, 90% of the neighborhood is working hard on it. They're not quite there. The guy won't show up on time. They're trying, they're trying, they're trying. To me, you give way more leeway.
Right, and I think, I don't know about 90%, but I think you're on the right track. I think, again, most people have, the, the email string that was circulating, you know, for the first days, weeks, even month or two after this whole thing came up, I haven't seen an email come up in probably, I don't know, six weeks, maybe two months now at this point. Because everybody's settled in, sort of like they're permanent or they're semi-permanent situ, wherever they're at now, that seems to be where they're, where they're going. A little surprised that you've had trouble with the contractors and all, um, 'cause I think most of those issues have been solved. And I can't speak for everybody, but I can't speak for the, the people that are in close proximity to the ones that have, that are stabilized and they're, they're running off of a, you know, an 80 decibel generator 20 hours a day. That's, that's, again, I go back to equity, you know, everybody was suffering, everybody's still suffering. But now some continue to suffer more, considerably more than the, 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 the status of most in the area.
Is that, that one generator that we're talking about that's going like 20 hours a day, is the generator their only source of power?
I don't know, but I believe so. Uh, that's why I get back to, um, should we be allowing a generator to be the primary source of power for a home? Because in that case, it's, it's going to run 20 hours a day, you know? Somebody gets home at midnight, they want power, they get up early in the morning, they're, 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 they're gonna want power.
Can I ask you a question? If you have the system that, so you've got solar panels, batteries, and your generator kicks on to recharge your batteries when there's no, not enough collection from the solar? Do you have control over when that battery kicks on? I mean, can we even have people do that? I'm sorry, when the, when the generator kicks on to repower the batteries? I mean, I thought that was all automatic.
Some are, mine is not. Um, again, that's, that's sort of my unique situation. Um, it was, you know, the first week it was get something, get anything. Then the second week is, okay, now I need to work with the contractor. You know, the first month it was installation had started, permits were being issued, and people were doing things. The second month was kind of, you know, kind of glowing at that point. You know, I, I got my generator in very early and, and used that for a while to power during the day, turn it on at night sermon. But I, I got the generator in before I got the battery and, and panels. So it was the spec for the automatic, you know, start and, and, and shut off. That's, that's the next goal. It's not gonna have any impact on how long it runs or does it because you just turn it on and you don't turn it off.
Okay, so can I make a suggestion where we're at right now? Is, why don't we, at staff's earliest convenience, 'cause it's not simple, is to do the best survey we can do to find out, are you gonna put in solar? Are you or do you solar? Are you or do you battery? Are you or do you generator? What type of generator? Is it diesel, compressed natural gas, or gasoline? I mean, no one has gasoline. But terrifying, propane. So which, uh, which ones are you, are we, do you have in there? You know, what size generator if they know? Because if someone's out there with the little Honda generator which works great, that's not a long-term solution, period. Where these bigger generators are much quieter than the little guys.
And it's counterintuitive. A lot of people, they, "Oh, you have a diesel? Oh, that must be a lot." No, it's just a low hum. It's, it's really, I, I can't hear my generator, but my neighbor's generator's on.
Yes. So can we, and try to make, and maybe work with Pat on what these questions are, just to make sure we're asking all the right ones. But let's ask all these questions and find out what that looks like. What's your target date for being complete? What's your, whatever that is? 'Cause I think part of this is, are we three weeks away from everyone being who they are? Or is this three more months of everyone trying to figure out where they're at, that kind of thing? And then I, I think that's gonna start, I don't wanna say clearing that up, because I think our first goal would be is quiet ideally from 10:00 to 7:00 or 10:00 to 6:00 or something like that would be the first goal.
I thought about this and, you know, it's gonna be a real problem for staff on enforcement.
It's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be neighbors calling on neighbors, et cetera. It's not gonna be any fun. But I think that's in my mind what the first goal is, can we get to where it's quiet at night? And night starts in my mind 10:00 to 6:00 or something like that. Then the next goal is, can we get it to where it's an occasional disruption versus a constant interaction with the noise?
And that's consistent with, with what I brought up.
Yeah.
Should there be a limit on, on the time from 10:00 to 6:00, 10:00 to 7:00, whatever it is? And during that period of time, should there also be a secondary limitation? No more than three consecutive hours, or just, I'm just pulling a number out of the air. And, and again, the decibel limit, uh, I think is important. It's, you know, it's measurable, it's objective.
But I think if we get to where everyone says this is it, then we'll kind of quickly identify there's three people who are either, are out there with portable generators trying to make it all work. And then we're not to, we have a conversation with them or we make a rule that you can't do that? I mean, there's, I, I don't know what that is yet, 'cause I wanna be gentle somewhere in the middle here. But I think we need to find out where we're at first and then identify what really is the underlying problem. 'Cause those little Honda generators are spectacular for a short period of time at a campground site. You can't run a house on that. I mean, you can, and that's the problem.
So can I ask a question? How many, do you have a feel for how many are the problem places? How many are we talking about out of 40?
Well, it's a pretty wide geographic area. She's got some in her neighborhood. I have some in my neighborhood. Hard to, to put an absolute number on it. Five, maybe? I'm just, you know, from comments that I've heard.
I'm, I'm just wondering though, rather than surveying 40, you know, which is be a little bit tougher with staff to, to all that stuff. But just to find out some of the ones that maybe people have some complaints about what's going on.
Someone would be careful. Any potential ordinance or policy will be generally applicable. And so by trying to, and your point's well taken. I totally understand what you're saying. But that would basically, I don't wanna put staff in the non, you know, in the, in the poor position to kind of prejudge as, hey, you are the problem when we don't really know what that problem is, because that's up for you five to decide.
Well, and be, the way this is gonna solve is, at some point, if we decide it's really this and this, it's gonna be decibel levels, the decibel levels of the bigger, I don't want, the, the, the real backup generators versus the little portable backup generators are very different. So we can solve it through some of the things, but I don't wanna start trying to solve a problem when somebody's dealing with what they're dealing with and we're picking, like, I don't wanna pick a fight with somebody if they're like, "Look, I'm so close." 'Cause we're just gonna, we're in a bad scenario, so.
Um, I do want to add that staff is working closely with SoCal Edison, um, Valley County Public Works, and Will Dan, and the fire department on individuals that have gone through the permitting process. Uh, we are already doing that research to see who has the generators, the propane tanks, the solar panels. And the reason why is because, one, for us to know, um, that all the permits, we need to know if they've been inspected and finalled. Because if, we may recall, we've talked about this in the past, that when the 12 properties came up as a pot, potential restoration of power, they weren't able to restore all those, um, properties at the same time, simply because, um, we weren't aware that one of the expectations of Southern California Edison was to determine how many of those properties had these new items attached to their properties to be powered. But most importantly, if they did, did they have the permits on file and were they properly and finalled and inspected, bless you? So we are already in that gather, data gathering process, because as Councilwoman Marsh had mentioned, we, we need to be prepared for when that happens again, that we have all our ducks lined up in a row. So a lot of this information, we've kind of already started gathering. Um, it's the finer details, I think, that you're asking, that we can go back and do some more research. But we kind of started doing our due diligence already, um, about a, a month back when we found out about the initial restorations.
Okay, when you guys are talking to whoever you're talking to, and there's a couple of the big generator guys around here, which we already know who they are, is, could we ask them about the issue of burying propane tanks as a long-term piece to that? 'Cause it, it is way safer that way. And then two is, um, is there anything they can do to insulate them to minimize the noise?
Wait, insulate the?
Generator?
Generator, not the tank.
Oh, not tank, I'm sorry, sorry. On the generator, to insulate the generators on what the noise is. Because again, is, I know it's about airflow around them and those sort of things, but if we can do something that builds a big box around them and it looks like a, a shed, maybe, yeah, just like over there. Okay. All right, so could someone?
You have to allow it, but you're.
Yeah, just super fast, Fred.
Real fast, one of the, one of the major hangups on my getting the power walls up and operating was that my vendor refused, refused to put them in unless he had complete county clearance. In other words, I know some of the individuals that have put in their batteries and their propane tanks, didn't bother to go through any of the permitting process. And, and their vendor, now they're up and operating, and now their vendor, I guess, is trying to get the permitting process through. But my vendor was a big operator, and they weren't gonna do it that way. So they had to continually going back and forth between them and county to get their paperwork approved. And finally, all that paperwork's been approved, ready to fire it up. And now the issue has arisen, because these are power walls. Can they operate in an off-grid capacity permanently? 'Cause that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
I think they can. Pat, I did enough research on this that I wouldn't have gone for if I didn't think they could do it. They've assured me that they can. But one problem is, every time they send somebody out to work on these things, they say somebody out differently. It's not the same person. So the last guy that was out here to supposedly quote, uh, finalize it and, uh, I forget the exact word he was using, but to commission it, to commission it with Tes, Tesla and finalize it, he, he goes, "How come you don't have any electricity from Edison here?" I said, "You have to be kidding me." So that's, that's the last hangup. So I'm hoping that finally they're all gonna get the classic round hole square peg. Now, if you got a little operator and it's, that's, he's only sending the same guy out, they all know what the issue is. This problem was, I was a big operator, and every time they sent somebody out, it was different. And I had to explain to them over and over and over again that we don't have any electricity, we're off-grid, so on and so forth. Okay? That was my issue.
Okay, then, could someone make a motion to receive and file?
I'd make a motion.
One second. All favor?
Aye.
All right.
And so what, so hang on.
This is what we're doing. What we're doing is, Serena and Sam are gonna work with Pat. They're gonna make up a good list, and we're gonna find out what the heck's going on down there.
And so, and I do apologize for, I wanna, I wanna make sure that's the will of the entirety of the, of the body. Correct. There was a receiving file, so I apologize, Mr. Mayor, if you wanna make a motion to that effect.
I make a motion that.
Can you just direct staff?
He can, once again, he can direct staff, as long as everyone up here is, is comfortable and realizes that, that.
Can we have an issue with what I just said?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I get a second for that?
No, we directed staff.
Just direct staff, we're good.
Oh, okay.
Look at us. Talk to Pat. Okay, so, um, receiving file will have verbal update of the status of the sub-application for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to address additional fire, fuel abatement and rolling hills.
Evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, for the next 30 minutes, I'm gonna talk about, no. It'll be very quick. Um, a, as you know, uh, at the, uh, and Councilmember Black wasn't here, so I'll, I'll just, I'll add a little bit of color to it. But, um, uh, we were discussing the, uh, the second vegetation management grant for Klondike Canyon. Uh, it had been waitlisted. It came off the waitlist, and we had an opportunity to make a decision as to whether or not we were going to fund the local match portion. Um, and, uh, and at the December 10th meeting, Cal Elias was here. We had a representative here, uh, from there. And, um, and she, she lent some credence to the idea that we did not possibly need to fund it at this time, that there was some hesitancy as to moving forward at this time. Uh, staff did have a subsequent meeting with, uh, Cal Elias representatives. Uh, and they, uh, they did say that, yes, we could go back on the waitlist. We could wait for a future, a different, uh, emergencies, um, a federal emergency, uh, where the, they could come back to us and, and, uh, and give us an opportunity to pursue that grant, uh, under a different, um, I'm forgetting the term right now, but a, a differently funded disaster award. Yes, thank you. Um, sorry, it's been a long day. Um, with, so with that said, uh, this is really just to let you know that per your request, um, we can kind of keep it in a holding pattern in the waitlist, and we can evaluate it again at a future time, uh, once we see other capital projects being completed or the need, uh, to move forward with, uh, further fuel, fire, uh, fire, fuel management. That's it.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, any public, come, man?
Hi, I'm sorry I wasn't at the other meeting where you obviously already discussed it. Marie de Garrity, 19 Southfield, above Klondike. There's Klondike, and then there's all the gent, all the propane tanks. So with everything that, um, you guys are in such a difficult position with a limited budget, but, and you've already discussed it, but I guess I wish that you would be proactive with that. Um, because then afterwards, when things are destroyed, there's so much more money spent. So I hope, um, I, I may, I might not be understanding the details. It sounds like maybe you could have gone forward with something and you're deciding you won't go forward with it now. And maybe that's a financial concern. But given everything, is, am I understanding it correctly?
I, do you?
We can't talk.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry for your, your question.
Okay.
It's basically, is, we have a grant right now to do one of these things, and we've spent money and. It's basically, is, we have a grant right now to do one of these things, and we've spent money and nothing's happened.
Right, the paintbrush canyon that's gone on for years?
Forever, and it just keeps going. We were very fortunate that the, one of the senior people were here, and we were gonna completely cancel it, the next one, because all we do is spend money and nothing happens.
Got it.
And so she said we could kick the ball down the road, because it's some sort, we can kick the ball down the road. Because until we actually see something for the money we're spending on the paintbrush one, there's no way we're gonna now go into another one that nothing happens forever.
You put money in and you didn't get anything back for your effort and money?
Haven't, we haven't seen a single piece of-
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not one single weed has been whacked, not one.
That money all went for environmental studies. To be able to go on to people's property, to do the work. Government is not the answer for things, we were-
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not one single weed.
We all wanted to do this, we thought, God, a grant, this is wonderful, th- this is gonna be great. But the reality of it is, is, as everybody said, money's being spent, nothing has happened. And I have a feeling that all those, when we finally get around to it, I think we're gonna find out that, they're gonna say, oh, well, that study was done two and a half years ago, you're gonna have to do it again. The, don't laugh, it's not, this is not-
I didn't realize, okay.
So, so the fact that we may not go for, uh, who knows what we're, we're going to do. We all would love to get money and get this done. The fact that we don't, if we choose not to do it, it won't be because we don't want the situation fixed. We still want paintbrush fixed.
No, of course, okay. Well, as soon as I get done cleaning my lot up, which is an ongoing thing, I'm right next to Klondike, and I'm retired, so I'm gonna be available.
He says real fast.
Yeah, I have a comment to make about the paintbrush situation. Appears the hangup now is that we need to amend our, um, mitigation plan, right, and, and we're, we're doing that now in conjunction with the rest of the cities, so, like, uh, like we didn't, we used to do it, we were still on our own, but now we're doing it with the rest of the peninsula, which makes a lot of sense when we started to do it, but that's, that's hanging, that's what's hanging up the paintbrush funding. Can we ask the powers that be, given the extraordinary circumstances of what's just happened here in LA County, can we ask them to temper, to waive that for, for the paintbrush Portuguese bin funding, to waive that, so that we can go forward to get the money to complete paintbrush, and so on. Secondarily, if they're unwilling to waive it, is there some way we can do just enough to amend, to pull it out of the, the queue that we're hung up with, with the rest of the cities, and do just enough to make the FEMA people happy, just amend it on our own, you know, just change a few words, do some boilerplate, submit it, get it, amend it, and then later on, once we get the FEMA money, we can go back in and, and smooth it over with the rest of the peninsula. In other words, can't we, you know, can we, you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Waiver first, okay, no, let's see what we can pull, can we pull some of it out of what we're waiting on, or accelerate it somehow, just to get our little portion ready to go, so we can dislodge that FEMA money.
All right, thank you.
That was my comment, sorry.
About to go to closing.
I have to go, love, take a shower, turn off my generator.
Yeah, hurry. Okay, all right, close the public comment, um, does someone make a motion to receive and file?
I make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Now we're gonna have a closed session. Is, um, now we're having a closed session, can we do this in the order that gets Jim out of here the fastest, or whatever you think the most important is? Because Jim's gonna walk out of here, what'd you just do to your arm?
I had a pensioner since last week.
Just a second, yeah, ten fourteen.
Ten fourteen, thank you, Mr. City Clerk.
On a Genesis, you can check different places, right? Or maybe it's watch duty. I forget what I'm looking for.
Okay, we are.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and give my closed session report. The city council recessed into closed session pursuant to the items listed on the agenda at 10:14 p.m. Note that the same item was inadvertently listed twice. The city council reconvened into open session at 11:06 p.m. and no reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.